To order this session, the Tacoma Park City Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Councilmember Cercy.
Yeah.
Great, welcome everyone. Let's see, our agenda for this evening has not changed. As we look forward to future agendas, next week, Wednesday, May 29th, the council will not meet, so I hope everybody enjoys a long weekend and next week. We will meet again on Wednesday, June 5th. Our regular time is 7:30, but the location will be at the Tacoma Park Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. That evening, we will actually have three proclamations. It is Immigrant Heritage Month, Gun Violence Awareness Day, and Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week. Our voting session that evening will be the second reading ordinance reestablishing the Safe Roadways Committee as the Complete Safe Streets Committee, a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for resurfaced restoration of the Community Center Pedestrian Bridge. We have two work sessions scheduled, a presentation discussion of community grant award recommendations, and presentation discussion of the Board of Elections Recommendation for City Charter and Code Amendments. Our next meeting will be on June 12th. We will have a presentation and a public hearing on the small cell wireless regulations. As a reminder, those regulations, admin regulations are up on the city website if people want to see them, and please feel free to send in comments before the meeting on June 12th. We will have a work session that night on the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan Update and Committee Appointments. On Wednesday, June 19th, we will be having a joint meeting of the City Council and the Recreation Department and the Recreation Committee from 6:00 PM to 7:15 in the Azalea Room that is open to the public. And following that, we will have our regular meeting at 7:30 here. Our voting session that night is a single reading ordinance awarding the FY '20 community grants, resolutions providing for appointments to committees, resolution appointing the Youth Council Advisor. Our work session that night will be small cell wireless regulations and an overview of the tree ordinance review process and tree canopy goals. The City Council will not meet the week of, on Wednesday, June 26th. Many people, especially my colleague, Councilmember Smith, will be very busy at the MML Conference. And then we will not meet the day before the 4th of July holiday on Wednesday, July 3rd. So then we will recommune again on Wednesday, July 10th. All right. So now we'll move on to public comments on voting items. The first is the first reading ordinance reestablishing the Safe Roadways Committee as the Complete Safe Streets Committee. Any public comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go to the next, is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for tree planting. Do we have public comments on that? Yep. That was perfect timing. You are all set.
Okay, thank you. My name's Liz Kleemeyer, and first I'd like to say about the contract, I was really impressed that Tacoma Park is going to plant 445 trees in the coming year. In fact, I had to send an email to Peter, my council member, saying, "Is this a typo?" So, bravo for that. My concern really isn't with the contract per se, but that it's being implemented before we've had a chance to discuss and decide whether or not we want to use our tree canopy to protect biodiversity. I mean, there are lots of things we want to do with our tree canopy, shade, beauty, carbon sequestration, but do we also want to make protecting and sustaining our local ecosystems and protecting biodiversity part of that objective? And I'm sure this will come out once the tree survey is completed and discussed and as we move forward on discussing our tree ordinance and our policies over the summer. But meanwhile, we're going to be planting 445 trees and making decisions about what species to plant. And that will have a big impact, the choice of species will have a big impact on how well we move towards a biodiversity objective. I sent you all an email, you may not have had time to read it, but with some links to the science on this. Some of that science, some of that research actually having been done in Tacoma Park. So, although, so, anyway, so, you know, we do know something about how to promote biodiversity, how to protect our ecosystem through choice of tree species. And it would change, you know, if you have that objective, it will affect what species you select. This is the handbook that every arborist has about how to select a tree. I've taken the Montgomery College courses on this, I ACE'd them, so I'm fully aware of these, but I can assure you that including criteria about biodiversity effect has not made it into, literally has not made it into the textbook. Basically, what, you know, if you add those criteria, it would mean that you would assess and prioritize a criteria of how does the tree contribute to sustaining the local food chain, food web? And, okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, so just let me say one more sentence. So what I would like to see-
We usually try and keep people to three minutes.
What I would like to see you do is to select trees for, these 445 trees, as though that was already our objective.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this voting item? It's the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for tree planting. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our voting session. The first vote, our item is the first reading ordinance reestablishing the Safe Roadways Committee as the Complete Safe Streets Committee. Would someone like to move this? Councilwoman Kostic moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, any discussion or comments on this? All right, seeing none.
I have quick, oh, sorry, I didn't see your light, yeah, go ahead. I think this is great, and I'm really happy that we are moving forward with reestablishing the newly-named Complete Safe Streets Committee. I also am really happy that we have, we're going to identify a staff liaison. I was wondering if you have anybody in mind yet, or if that's something you're going to work on in the future.
So we will have a representative from Housing and Community Development as the primary, but we will also have assistance from our traffic person in the police department, as well as the, somebody from Public Works. So we will have a primary but frequent use of these other staff.
Great, thank you. And then I think the other thing we all need to do now, as we're reestablishing this, is to make sure we are spreading the word and recruiting people to join the committee. So, let's all get to it. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, all those in favor of the ordinance reestablishing the Safe Roadways Committee as the Complete Safe Streets Committee, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? All right. The next is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for tree planting. Thank you for the comments, I did return your email, but you may not have gotten it because it was late this afternoon. And I have a question for the city manager.
Okay, and Ms. Braithwaite is here also.
Oh, she is, okay. I did not see-
She, yes, just arrived.
Snuck in.
Hi. First and foremost, I got to point out there's an error on the number of trees that are going to be planted. I think you saw from, I don't know where 445 came from, but I think it's more like 76. So, on some of the emails you got from the city arborists today and myself earlier, he had a list of the trees and it totaled 76, and he identified the species as well as the locations.
I just had a question, just to clarify, this is just for this year's planting?
Right. Basically, we've done tree planting several different ways, and some years we've identified a nursery and had a long-term contract with them over multiple years. This year, we did it a little differently and have been past several years where we identify the trees and then request pricing from several nurseries for those trees. So this is a single event, this is a springtime planting, this is only this particular planting where these streets and these trees have been identified. This is at the end of the process where we've already got confirmation from residents that they approve of the planting, and these are the actual trees' locations that'll be where planting will occur.
Great, and I did not have a chance to look at the email this afternoon regarding this, but are the trees native species?
Some are, some aren't. The city arborist uses a number of different decision tools. First and foremost, we always try to select native trees and native plants for most of our garden areas. However, with street trees, there's some particular difficulties with survival. They have to be kind of a tough, tough tree to survive in a street environment, they have very limited space, they're oftentimes constrained in terms of their growth area, and they also are pretty, have to be pretty hardy for both the street salt use as well as weather conditions. In addition to that, in the past few years, you know, growing awareness of climate change and the impact has also affected tree species that are selected. So the arborists use a number of different tools and nursery documents to determine which trees we think will have the best survival rate, as well as will meet the growing conditions in those locations. I just got here a list of the trees that are gonna, that were selected for this particular year. They include two types of dogwoods, a Cusa, and I guess just the Cusa dogwood, snow goose cherry, honey locust, Schumard oak, swamp white oak, willow oak, white oak, and the zelkowa. I think most of those are native trees, the exception may be the cherry. We can, I can have the arborist respond specifically to which are native and which are not. But in general, native species do better in the environment where they're, in the area where they're naturally occurring, however, because of the street conditions and the weather conditions and the impacts, we sometimes use non-native.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Cercy?
Thanks, Darrell. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what we're talking about. So it's a total of 76 trees for the spring planting, so it's just for the end of this fiscal year, correct? So we're not talking about calendar year. There will be another opportunity for there to be a fall planting list? And when will we know where those locations may be?
Generally, the process is that we identify planting locations either from past requests that we get from residents or from projects, for instance, where we've done sidewalk work and we know we have a list of trees that were removed and need to be replanted. When we select those areas, we use two sources of funding. We have the funds that are identified in the city budget for tree replacement in the public right-of-way, that is funded through the Tree Fund that people pay for the replanting fees, as well as violations and citations. For trees that are being replanted as a result of sidewalk work, we actually pay for those with the sidewalk funds. So both sidewalk and stormwater funds related to sidewalk work is covered in the capital budget allocation for sidewalks. So we've got a couple of sources that we use for tree planting. In general, the goal is to do a fall planting and a spring planting. Because of the rather intensive communication that the city requires before trees are planted, we have a pretty robust communication strategy with the residents on the selected streets. So we'll identify a street, we tend to identify an entire block. We don't do individual trees here and there because of maintenance as well as planting efficiency, so we try to do an entire street at a time. And then each of the residents where there's possible tree planting spaces, either there is an existing tree or there's space, we send a letter to the residents with three options of trees based on that condition. For the side of the street where there's no power lines, we use large overstory trees. For the side of the street where there tends to be the power lines, we use the smaller trees. And so people respond, either they select one of the three trees that we've identified, and based on the majority vote, we then, that's the tree that's planted along that block. At that point, people can also opt out of tree planting. This process wasn't, was actually developed by the council in many past years, so it's a process that we've been using probably for 10 or 12 years. The mailing, the three selections, the ability to opt out, so that's based on prior council directions. I imagine, you know, as we are talking about the tree ordinance in the future, we may want to revisit that to see if there's any changes that may, you know, may want to be considered in that process.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dibala?
That's, I think you just said most of what I was going to ask about. So the process that there is now is the arborist identifies areas where it would be useful to plant, for whatever reason, and you listed a bunch. But then there's interaction with the residents on that block about where and what kind of tree and all that. Okay. And so yes, maybe we should add that to the list of things to be thinking about on the tree when we get to the tree ordinance, but for the purposes of this local, settle locations and resident, so the residents have already been notified.
Right, they've already been notified.
And they've already had opportunity to select, including a native species, if it would fit, because a lot of them won't fit under the power line side. Okay, I think that's my question, oh, maintenance. I thought I read quarterly watering, in your experience?
Yeah, we added a couple of things in this particular year, tree planting proposal responses. We require deer fencing around the fence, because, you know, buckaroo is becoming a big problem for tree survival, as well as sanity for the rest of us. And then we usually do, they usually do a single watering. In the process of selecting those locations and talking to the residents, we also do tell them that the expectation is they'll help support that tree through watering in times of drought. But in addition to that, we've required the contractor to provide four waterings over the course. I don't think it's quarterly, I think it's just based on weather requirements, but I can check back into that. We also do a bit of watering ourselves with the Gardens Division when we have drought times and the arborist tracks, you know, a number of days without rain. We do have a water buffalo and a water meter, and the Gardens Division does do watering of street tree plantings. But it's definitely facilitated by individual residents assisting by watering the trees that were planted in front of their property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thanks for, to Ms. Braithwaite for correcting on the numbers, because that did seem-
Huge amount of trees.
High. So I appreciate Liz Kleemeyer's comments about the native trees. It sounds like in this case, the trees have already all been selected by the people and the few locations, and that whole process that you described has run its course. And so, to the extent there are a few non-native ones in there that you would view that decision as having been made, is that right?
Yes.
So I was thinking about, you know, clarifying, in this resolution, the idea that we should emphasize to the extent possible native trees, but I think if this has already been done or been sort of baked, I'm thinking again about that, I don't think that makes sense. But I do want to underline for everybody and for my colleagues that I think when we go forward in the fall and with the canopy and the ordinance and all of that, we should emphasize more heavily than we do now, the native, the importance of using native plants. I think Ms. Kleemeyer made a good case for that. So I view this, this particular contract, since it's already been essentially worked out with the residents, I don't have a desire to change that, but I think going forward, I think I'd like to have us emphasize that more. And it's something we can talk about when we, when we work on that. On the question of the residents' responsibility, so this comes up sometimes in terms of the hanging branches and so on, and I know some people who, particularly if they live near metro stops or areas where people walk a lot, will just do what they can to try to enable people to pass easily. Others don't and refrain from doing that because they think of them as public trees, and I've heard people have called the city to ask, and can you just clarify?
Yes, we would prefer to do the pruning ourselves, because pruning is something that requires some technical knowledge of proper technique. So in general, people may or may not be aware of proper pruning. We've had cases where people have butchered trees with the best intentions, but did a poor job of it. So we would prefer to do the pruning and do intend to do the pruning on street trees ourselves. So if anyone ever has an issue with a tree branch in the right-of-way, they call Public Works. We put it on the list, and it's fairly-
But that's different from, say, just clearing vegetation on a sidewalk, which in that case is, is there a responsibility with that for the homeowner?
Yeah, the maintenance of the right-of-way, that green strip, the expectation is that property owners mow that green strip, or if they plant herbaceous plants or perennials on that, that that's their responsibility. They're also required to keep the sidewalks clear, so if vegetation from their yard or adjacent to the, a sidewalk, for instance, has grown over a sidewalk, they're responsible for removing that.
But a homeowner or a resident can't be cited for a drooping street tree, right? Okay. One last question, several people have asked me about this. Is there a specific policy with regard, and again, we can talk about this in more detail when we get into the future work, but is there a policy with regard to fruit-bearing trees? Are they generally considered good or not good to have on a sidewalk, street area? Is there a policy about that?
I don't believe there's a policy in general, they make a mess. So depending on the type of tree, you have the same issue with ginkgos, you know, on the female ginkgos, so there's, you know, we avoid planting female ginkgos for the reasons of their fruit and their odor.
Right.
Same kind of thing can be found in some fruiting trees, though the primary one around here is the mulberry. We don't tend to plant mulberries because they're considered a nuisance tree. So the trees that we're planting in the right-of-way are, you know, are not typically, aren't trees that bear fruit. They're, the exception is probably the sweetgum, where we've planted sweetgums, and there's been a lot of discussion about that in the past because of the, you know, the fruiting body that they produce.
Okay, I think that would be worth at least-
Same could be said of acorns and the little maple twirly things, I mean-
Well, I think it would be worth exploring the appropriateness of that if they were native when we get into the canopy discussion later, so thank you.
Yeah, and I do appreciate Ms. Klesmer's comments, I think she's got a sympathetic audience in our arborists and in the department. We definitely have as a goal, planting native species, there just are some cases where native species don't do as well, and given the conditions, we select a non-native tree. But those, that's after a process of trying to identify a native tree that would work well.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I'm glad that the native trees are being taken into consideration, and I hope we can do more of that moving forward. My question is actually related to the Tree Fund as a whole. I was looking back at the budget, and it shows the Tree Fund as 25,000 coming from the Tree Fund, basically as a revenue source to the General Fund. Is that, are those the funds that are being used to pay for these trees? And how much is the balance in the overall Tree Fund? And what happens with that, those funds? Where do those kind of go?
Yeah, the funds are tracked by the Finance Office, and it's considered a liability account, and so as deposits are made, or as people pay for tree replanting or citation violations, those get deposited to that account, tracked in that account, and the Finance Office maintains records for that. I think there's currently, I responded, was it 90 or 80,000?
I didn't see it.
I think 90,800 in that account currently. And so each year, the tree planting budget is taken from that amount, and, you know, that's the source of those funds. In addition, we have, you had asked about the bulk buy or the tree planting on private property. Several years ago, the city established the bulk buy program where we enable residents to purchase nursery-quality trees through our tree nursery, and they're planted and then warranted for a year. Residents can buy those at the price that we get quoted, and in addition to that, the city offers a $100 rebate for the first tree planted, providing it's not a tree required in a tree replanting agreement based on a tree removal permit. So the funds for that $100 rebate do not come out of the Tree Fund, they come out of the city's general budget. It's one of those things where we don't know from year to year how many trees are going to be purchased by residents to plant. It generally averages about 40 to 50 trees a year. I think this year it was about 32, and those are offered in the fall and in the spring. And so that's the additional tree planting line that you see in the operating budget.
And so the remaining funds in the Tree Fund that are not part of that 25,000 that's allocated to the General Fund just remain in the liability fund for the future?
Yeah, they sit.
Okay, thank you very much.
They're a dedicated fund, they don't get used for anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for being here. I didn't read the resolution, you know, from 10 years ago when this program started, but what is the goal, the number of trees that that council had in mind? Was there a goal, or was it just to replace?
I think originally, I don't know that there was a goal, it was just to have an active program of annual planting. Since that time, with our NPDES permit, we get treatment credit for tree planting, so you get certain acre equivalent treatment. So our goal is to plant at least 100 trees a year, so we can, I think it gives us a half acre of treatment annually. So we have that factored into our criteria for trying to meet the 20% treatment requirement that we are, our goal is to reach by 2025.
That's for the stormwater treatment.
And so, do we meet that requirement?
Some years we exceed it, some years we are slightly under, but on average, yes.
All right, thank you.
Great, seeing no other questions, would someone like to move the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for tree planting? Councilmember Kovar, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala? Any other discussion or questions? All right, seeing this is a single reading ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart?
Yep.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala? Councilmember Kostic? Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Cercy?
Yes.
Great, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for providing the follow-up information. All right, we will move on to other public comments. Mr. Hubner, you asked for five minutes this evening, if you want to kick us off?
Well, since I have additional time, I would be a-
Please just, I think you're up.
I mean, I don't want to let other people go first, you know, that's very nice of you guys, and thank you for that. And before I go into the details, I just want to say that every time I go to a meeting, there's a council member there, and I'm grateful, I can't believe, I mean, I don't know if you have a home life, Jarrett's at the co-op meeting, you know, I saw Peter last night at the HPC meeting, you know, we're taking up a collection to get Casey some rollerskates to cover the neighborhood a little faster. And it doesn't go unnoticed, and I, at least for one, am grateful. And I think that you, like most of the staff people, are nice people that I like and can converse and get along with well, even if I disagree heartily on some issues. But I'm here to talk tonight, and I'd like to say I'm Paul Hubner from War Three, and I'm pleased that the council is leading a new path to fiscally sustainable government. It's a cornerstone of your four major goals for this council, and I strongly support it. As you consider the new budget review process, I'm hopeful you will do so many of the things that many of you espoused just last week. Reverse the budget formulation- last week. Reverse the budget formulation direction. Rather than the city manager building up an initial unreasonably high budget and spending critical council time, cutting it back, we must have this coming year should start with the fact that the real estate tax must be reduced. I mean, my goal is 10%. You should go into the budget with 10% cut, okay? Give that to the staff and let them figure out where they would cut it. If you don't want to do that, then create a budget. Let the council create the budget. Define your priorities. Look at the budget you just went through. You really know it now. And figure where you want the money to go. Then give it to the staff. Because otherwise, we're in this endless loop where the staff creates this super wish list. Well, you know, I'll just wish for $150,000. And if they cut $50,000 off, I'll still be sitting big in Chicago. And then the city manager and her staff can determine how to implement these mandates. But it's got to start, it's got to be flipped on its head. This is not working. You know, over the last three years, it's astronomical. Time on task. Multiple council members last week talked about council tasks. Councilwoman Siemens talked about how he's been trying to get this for years, all the way into capital projects. And here we are. We're going to repave the bridge again. How many times does that happen? And so I would seek that you utilize the present system that David Navari referred to and create the metrics for time on task. I'd review the job description. This is what I would do. It's not that hard. Review the job descriptions. Measure what is done and how long it takes. It may be that some things are just too expensive, or that other things are more easily achieved. You may unfortunately find that with the, find that some things, like for instance, the runaway library, you can't, you may not be able to afford it. I don't hope for that, but I'm very apprehensive about it. It's in the same ballpark as the first major renovation of this building. You're going to have to make choices. Difficult to do, but absolutely necessary to fulfill your mission and get things done on time and on budget. As I've said, well, as somebody else more famous than me said once, you can't always get what you want. I like a new truck. I need to get my house painted. You know, my air conditioner's starting to go a little bit. You gotta make choices. Every one of these residents makes choices. And you do too, I'm sure. But we have to put that discipline to the budget. You must choose sometimes, within capital projects, we have like about 10 or 12 million dollars worth of capital projects on the books right now, and sustaining the bureaucracy, which I see as positions in search of a mission. For instance, with the new outdoor café permit, that's only been a few months and that it's been approved. I reviewed just three permits. Yet each one was reviewed by a different high-level, high-level manager. Suzanne Ludlow, Sarah Danes, Roz Grisby. We've got 350,000, $400,000 people working on approving a permit for an outdoor café. That's a lot of money to give away in order to give away public land for private concerns. The same, what's that, one minute? All right. We can no longer afford keeping people and jobs no longer meeting their goals. The sustainability manager, the HR director who could never make the hires necessary, and the capital projects managers who can't budget, schedule, or file reports. Every department needs scrutiny. Hold public forums, not just public comments. Instead of the three-minute stuff, don't let the staff lobby anymore. New hires should be based on specific goals and requirements for defined durations.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner.
Survey should be done on effectiveness, not compensation.
Thank you.
And have a resident committee.
Thank you.
To work on the budget.
Yeah. Any other public comments tonight?
Hi, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm James Caldwell. I live on Cedar Avenue. And, yeah, and I'm the artist that painted the Guardians of the Neighborhood mural that's over in Tacoma Junction. It was almost 30 years ago that I painted that. And it's fallen into really terrible condition. It's kind of, yeah, it's a bit of disastrous, you know, embarrassment. It's just covered with all kinds of grime and 30 years' worth of crud. And so with all, I don't know what's happening at the junction, but I guess there's a possibility that they might tear that building down or move it or something. In which case, I'd like you guys to know that that mural is removable. So don't let it get crushed with a building by accident. I'd, I'd like to have it restored. I'd like to restore it. And I think it should be, you know, kept from destruction. It's been, in my mind, it's been a, kind of a nice symbol of Tacoma Park and popular. And afterwards, I think it'd be great if it could live indoors somewhere, you know, in this building maybe, or someplace so that it's just not exposed to, you know, the elements, primarily sun and graffiti artists, people like that. Aside from that, I'd like to thank you for, well, I live on Cedar. We're happy to have some new trees. It's going to be really pretty. And the other thing, Peter, I don't know if you noticed, but on Cedar Avenue in front of our house, there's been a drooping, some kind of communications line for the last month and a half. And it has a little, little Pepco sign on it saying, "This is not a Pepco line." And nobody seems to be complaining that they're missing any kind of service. So I don't know what, I'd like it to go away because it's all coiled up in front of my house. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Larry Silverman. I live on Birch Avenue. And I want to speak to James Caldwell's request that his work of art be preserved and, and enjoyed more fully. This is, this is budget time and tax time, and it's time when people might ask themselves the question, "Why do we have a city anyway? What, what brings us together?" And I think there are many answers to that question, and I'm sure you all have better answers than I do. But I think one part of it is that we have a, there's a sense of community here. There's an ethos. There's pride in our diversity. There's pride in our quirkiness. And there's something, there's something Tacoma Park, about Tacoma Park, that it's hard to say. But I think Jim Caldwell captured it in that mural. And it's why that mural adorned so many, has over the years adorned so many programs for festivals and parties and anything celebrating the city, because it celebrates us. It's, it shows that we are the center of, you know, think global, act local. And those kinds of symbols need to be preserved. And I think really, if we do that with care and thoughtfulness, that will help preserve our city and our sense of government and our common purpose. So I, I'm one of Jim's neighbors and friends, but I'm also a great admirer of his artwork. And I'm particularly an admirer, like most of the people in the city, of that beautiful mural, which has fallen on hard times. And I hope you will take some action to correct that situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening. Jessica Landman, Ward One. I'm here this evening to talk a little bit about where we are in the process for development at the Tacoma Junction. Last night, as many of you probably know, the Historic Preservation Commission held its preliminary consultation with NDC on the proposed design for the structure. I encourage each of you to go to the link that is up and running now at the Park and Planning website so that you can listen to the exchange and see the slides that were presented by the staff and hear for yourself what the commissioners had to say. I just wanted to summarize for you briefly to keep you up to speed for those of you who are not able to be there. And thank you, Peter, for attending. So I will summarize, but obviously, I may not get every jot and tittle correct since it was just last night, and there were a lot of things said. But it is fair to say, in summary, that the commission members were unanimous in support of what was said in the staff report, which is also available on their website, and that, that they all agreed that overall, the design is incompatible with the junction, that the developer needs to address these concerns and return to the commission for a second preliminary consultation with a new design. And I will just summarize in briefly what the key points were that were made by, I'm going to stick to the things that were said by most of the commissioners. There were a number of additional things that individual commissioners addressed. They all said the building is too large. They said it needs to be made lower, and it needs to be broken up in its appearance, either into two separate buildings. One commissioner even suggested a one-story and a two-story building, or into a design that presents a facade as if it were two separate buildings. And several suggested a courtyard in the center of the two buildings. They agreed that the glass tower in the design was completely unacceptable and out of place. They agreed that the design detail was out of harmony with the surrounding buildings and needed to be altered to relate better to the surrounding structures. They said that the canopy that was proposed at 20 feet was too high and inappropriate for a structure in this community and the surrounding buildings being so different. They agreed that wider sidewalks and more public space were needed, and they stressed that the public space issue was clearly important to the community. They said that the removal of an historic structure, namely the one that Jim Caldwell's painting is on, his fresque mural, and the proposed street realignment were not consistent with, from, or not, were bad from a historic preservation standpoint, and that the developer should find other ways to mitigate traffic. And finally, and I quote the commission chairwoman, "The lay-by is an abomination." So in short, the chair said, "The commission does not like this design very much." My last thought is that whatever new design emerges, and clearly if NDC is going forward, there will have to be a new design, it is critical that this, that this council adhere to its commitment that the new design also accommodate our neighborhood grocery store. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight?
Hello, Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue. And I have a proposal before the council is that they close northbound Laurel Avenue, the shop side of that. Extend the pedestrian area across the lane to the other side of the center section, and allow traffic only in the southbound section of Laurel. That's a presentation that you have. I do not support this proposal. And one, thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for giving the presentation to the folks. I appreciate that. One of the ramifications of closing Laurel, the second page, traffic will divert into the neighborhoods. Mobility challenged folks will have to park further from the stores and the post office. With the loss of parking, the mobile, the parking lot behind the shops will become more crowded and therefore less available, and post office patrons will be impacted. I went Monday and Tuesday to do traffic counts on Laurel Avenue. The next three slides are basically this slide right here. How did I do the counts? Northbound Eastern to a right on Laurel. Laurel across from DC into Laurel, Maryland. And southbound Eastern to a left onto Laurel. Now, there are also problems because northbound Eastern is closed for work. So what I did was, any car that came down Laurel and made a left on Carroll, I figured could have perhaps wanted to go straight through there and could not. So I took them out of the mix. And they're in, in that chart as well. And I wanted to make sure that you knew that. So what numbers do we have? First thing I want you to know is, just like the trees, this number is wrong.
[laughing]
The total vehicles, May, the May 21, it should be 361, not the 289 that's here. That was just a mistake in this block. That's the only block that is there. And this is a native tree. So anyway, what we have here basically is a list of two different hours. On May 20th, from 11:45 to 12:45 at noon. May 21st, it was 4:20 to 5:20. Basically, you had 428 cars going through there that somebody's going to have to figure out what to do with if Laurel is closed. Other issues, people have said the farmer's market might be an issue. That's on a Sunday. No deliveries, less traffic. Farmer's market is, is not there. Parking spots were always full. The budget, you've got the library, you've got the rec center coming up. Don't spend money on this project. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Thanks again, Ms. Ludlow.
Oh, and it's just a reminder, Mr. Anderson, just for everyone, if you do have a presentation, I thank you very much. Given what's happening right now to the city of Baltimore, we're, we're sticking kind of strictly to the 24-hour notice to use slides in the city. And we may actually start not accepting thumb drives anymore. And so you can email us information that we'll present. But we are, our IT department is being-
We're talking about staff not even using them.
Yeah, and we're talking about staff not even using them anymore because what's happening in Baltimore right now is actually really scary. So anyway, Ms. Cordis.
Colleen Cordis, Ward One, and speaking for Community Vision for Tacoma, about the budget review, we urge the council and staff to start a time-on-task pilot project by July 1st, and to carry it out in a way that involves the whole staff, not just one or two departments. We've heard that could be done in a relatively simple method. Also for the budget, we urge you to build in opportunities for residents to participate earlier and much more interactively in the whole budget planning process. And third, this is very complicated, but that, please do not assume that the state-certified constant yield tax rate is the one to use as your constant yield rate, because it disregards your own adopted target for the amount of revenue, tax revenue you want to generate in fiscal '20. So, and then it, and then that means that it sets you off to spend according to money you accidentally raised by having set, if you set your tax rate so high. So anyway, this is too complicated to go into tonight, but we would urge you not to assume that the state-certified constant yield rate is actually the rate and the level of spending, of tax generation you should start out with. On another issue, the small cell tower regulations, we're concerned that there has not been adequate public notice. Legally, you may have done it, but not the spirit of adequate public notice. We've never seen a story yet in the newsletter about it. There was one little notice about the regulations now being done, but you'd have to know what you were looking for to understand that notice was telling you that the small cell tower regulations were now on the city's website. So we urge you in June, if you have to scramble to do it, please have a story. Give the highlights of the ordinance and the regulations. Tell people about the public hearing, how they can make comments, how they can read all the regulations. We also would ask that the council get a briefing before the public hearing on June 12th about what's in the regulations and why, because it is a complicated subject, and both the council and residents need some kind of background education about it before the public hearing. And then third, we recall that the mayor was positive about the idea of a residents advisory committee. I know that would take a long time, so we would suggest that you appoint a couple of additional members to the environment committee, and let the environment committee know you need them to give you input on the several environmental concerns with small cell towers. And appoint a couple of people who are well-informed on the issues, and consider, since that's a committee that requires representatives of community organizations, consider appointing someone from Community Vision for Tacoma, because we have taken the lead on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Rick Weiss, Ward Three, and kind of a combined comment with regard to the early emergence of thoughts for plans of Laurel Avenue. Wanted to throw out my opinion and some of my neighbors that were very concerned about the idea of closing down the northbound lane of Laurel for a couple of reasons, one of them being that to the extent you shunt traffic away from that commercial thoroughfare, and you send cars down Walnut and up West Moreland or up Paul, up Pine. In particular, I think if any of you have driven up West Moreland to Carroll, you're aware of the fact that you can't see whether there's any cars coming from the left or the right there. It's a problem that's been around for a long time. It's exacerbated when you have the ACE delivery semi that's often parked at- It's exacerbated when you have the Ace Delivery semi that's often parked at the top of Carroll there, across from Ace, which closes off one of those two lanes for the right turn-only lane on Carroll. It's a very dangerous intersection already where people have to creep out and almost get hit on Carroll. So to the extent traffic is diverted away from a commercial thoroughfare and onto residential streets, and especially ones with tough intersections, I think that's not a very promising idea. I will say that if the city is concerned and interested in having more public space where people can walk around and hang out and schmooze with each other, I wish you would go back to the drawing board and do that at Tacoma Junction, which is what we, the people of Tacoma Park, have been asking for, for a long time, and which the developers have failed to provide in any of the plans that I've seen, where we have a postage stamp-sized bit of concrete that's supposed to be the Tacoma Park Hangout area. Let's do something there that we haven't, where we haven't built yet and where we can get it right the first time, and I don't see why we would want to build a new building there that creates a problem that you're now trying to solve on Laurel Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Any council comments? Councilwoman Circe.
Man, I went first. So I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Siemens for inviting me to participate in a panel on Friday discussing ways to connect nonprofits, the Maricor Vista programs, and various aspects of government together in terms of collaboration, and it was a wonderful panel. Evan Glass was there, there were just so many people there, and it was just a really wonderful exchange. So thank you so much for the opportunity to participate on that panel. I also want to thank on Saturday, residents at Tacoma Overlook and Grace Wiggins, she's the amazing Grace, that's what I'm gonna start calling her, organized yoga on the green for residents in Tacoma Overlook. And definitely want to thank Cheryl Kravitz from Willow Street Yoga, who facilitated a wonderful session where we were able to just zone out on a little bit of green space in the morning, and it was a really wonderful exchange, so much so, I'm like, oh, we should do this more often in different places. So it was really, really, really lovely. So I just want to say thank you. Also, I want to give a kudos to WSSC. So on Friday, was it Friday? Friday, I think it was Friday. We found out that they had to shut off water to Hampshire Towers as well as Tacoma Overlook to do some main work on New Hampshire Avenue, and I was expecting all heck to break loose, but staff were out there. They had communicated to the residents in the various buildings. They were out there passing out water because people are gonna be without water overnight, and I did not receive one complaint. Now, I don't know if you received complaints, but for residents to lose water starting at nine o'clock and for it to go, was it, maybe it was Thursday, for it to go until the next morning and not receive a single complaint, I do want to say, WSSC did an okay job that time. So thank you to staff that worked on that, because I was expecting to be up, I believe it was on Thursday into Friday morning, and so I was pleasantly surprised to not have much of a ruckus in terms of water outage. So thanks so much.
Councilman Kostick.
Yeah, I want to, first of all, just mention a couple of the events that happened over the weekend. There was a great Celebrate Tacoma Festival, and I want to wish a big congratulations to the Azalea Award winners. And there was also a children's business fair on Sunday, where it was a great opportunity to be able to walk around and see some young entrepreneurs selling things from dog biscuits to cookies and lemonade to magic wands, a whole variety of different things. It was a really great event. This week tomorrow is an open house for the Bus Transformation Project, which is a region-wide study that is looking at bus service and the goals of improving bus service in the region and making bus kind of the go-to transportation method by 2030. There's an open house from 4:30 to 7:30 PM at the Silver Springs Civic Center, so I encourage people to check that out. I think, my sense is that it's sort of a drop-in, come whenever you can and learn about it and share your thoughts on it. There's also a website you can go to with a survey as well. I have been planning a Ward 3 day with the Crossroads Market, and I was hoping to do it next week on Wednesday, and I actually announced that in my weekly update, but unfortunately some things come up and I have to change that date. So I just want everyone to know, we're going to have it hopefully one of the first two Wednesdays in June, but please do not expect me to be there next Wednesday, but I hope you'll still go if you had it on your calendar. And then finally, the Wacko Neighborhood Association is planning a meeting next Thursday, May 30th, at 7:30 PM in the Azalea Room here. A big part of that meeting will be discussing the Laurel Avenue closure proposal. A lot of people are interested in weighing in on that and sharing their perspectives. So I plan to attend that meeting, and I encourage people to attend if they're available. You can also obviously send me your comments and your thoughts, and I've been hearing from a lot of people on that proposal throughout the past couple of days. I've also talked with the leaders of the BF Gilbert Neighborhood Association, and we've discussed maybe trying to have a similar meeting later in June. They're working on a different meeting focused on stormwater in Ju, earlier June, so they kind of wanted to focus on that first, but maybe later in the month in June, we could have something to discuss with the BF Gilbert Neighborhood, which I know is also potentially impacted there. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah, keying off on a couple of things that other council members have said. Ward 2 day is currently June 5th at the Crossroads. So I don't think you can do that one unless you want to double up, but we could talk about that. So I hope to see everybody out, out on June 5th around lunchtime at the Crossroads Farmer's Market. The Azalea Awards are posted online for people, some people have emailed me asking, so Tacoma Foundation's got them up online now. I see that the city manager is gonna talk a bit about Lincoln Avenue. Maybe the WSSC people were all over it at the tower instead of on Lincoln Avenue last Friday. But looking forward is what I wanted to say. Next week, starting Friday and going through next week, there'll be work on Lincoln Avenue proper to install the FlexiPave pavement that's been, that was skipped in order to get the special attention that it deserves. And there'll be work continuing on the stormwater portion of the project, and that'll be, will you be leaving Aspen and moving to Boyd? Okay. In the middle of the week maybe, or at the beginning of the week? In the middle of the week. So that, so that'll, there'll be, watch for the sign changes. There'll be some, is all I wanted to say about that. And then on a regional level, last week was the Chesapeake Bay Policy Committee for the COG, for the regional government. Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week is coming up, as the mayor alluded to. In addition to a proclamation, there'll be regions, activities in the region, and our, the city will be, will be tweeting and emailing out some stuff about that. And the Climate and Energy Group met today, and Tacoma Park is first out of the gate in terms of doing an updated climate plan or doing a climate plan at all, but it turned out that several other communities are starting this summer. Montgomery County, Fairfax County, Alexandria, I'm missing one at least, and COG itself is doing a regional climate plan. So this summer and fall, for those of you who are interested in that, in that topic and in that set of activities, there's gonna be a lot going on in this region, so stay tuned. And that's it. Oh, one more thing, I'll be out of town next week, so responses might be a little slower than usual, but I'll give it my best. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Circe for participating on the panel. Was, I think, a very successful event, and a great deal of that goes to your credit. I appreciate your insights at that discussion. I also wanted to thank Ms. Ludlow and the many staff members who helped to set up the panel and the room, and the other room where they had their lunch, and also for the television coverage. Appreciate it. Thank you. And that's all.
Councilmember Smith.
First, I would like to thank the one and only Grace Wiggins for organizing an event at Cambridge Apartments on Houston Avenue. It was a pizza happy hour. A lot of residents attended. Thank you, Grace. This is fantastic. We're gonna have a number of other resident events at this apartment building, which is owned by Victory Housing. They own another building, also another, at least another couple buildings in the city. Want to talk about the delay of the Flower Avenue-Green Street project. I've communicated with WSSC. They should have an approval of their materials this week. Actual construction should start June 3rd. I want to thank everybody involved in Celebrate Tacoma. It was fantastic. It was an unbelievable event. If you didn't go this year, make sure you attend next year. Everybody did just a bang-up job. And then finally, we had the Montgomery County Chapter of MML meeting. Ms. Ludlow attended. Hopefully, we're gonna eventually get some good news about tax duplication. It is something that we're continuing to work on. There were also elections for chapter leadership, and I was once again elected to represent the chapter for the board of directors. Thank you.
Councilman McCollough.
Congratulations, Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A few things I wanted to mention. One, I note that the city manager will be providing some additional information about the bike markings on Cedar, so I won't say anything on that until your opportunity. I'm sure we can chat more then. One of the things that's come up in regard to the use of this building by several outside groups is how our process works for using the auditorium, and I think it might be something we ought to take a look at. I think myself and maybe Councilmember Smith were contacted by Progressive Neighbors about potentially using the space and whether they have to pay full freight, and I'm not sure what I think even about having a political group doing that, but I think it's something we could talk about. And I've also been contacted by a person representing an outside group that wasn't an officially designated nonprofit but was a local group, not a business, that also wanted to use it, and I think sometimes our policy has been to waive the fee and sometimes not, and maybe we're just due for another look at that. I understand that, of course, we have a lot of other things going on, but I have a feeling we'll have to deal with that. So I just mentioned that as a topic for future potential activity. I'm hearing from a lot of people throughout Ward 1 about the running of red lights and what, if anything, can be done to police that. I can say, specifically, I can send a separate list of the intersections in question, but Newark Avenue and Tacoma Avenue, Tulip and Holly, which I witnessed myself on occasion. And I think there is a concern about whether, obviously the police can't be at any one place all the time, but whether there's a way to look at some hotspots and do that. And I will say, I mean, I was just contacted by someone before the meeting, so I didn't have a chance to follow up, but I know sometimes people leave items that they no longer want outside, and people come by and who may want them and sort of freecycle them, and I guess the person in this case was issued a citation, and two different arms of the same department, but I think people get concerned if they don't see enforcement of speeding, and then there are citations issued for things like that, which I think a lot of us have done, myself included. So I'd like us just to sort of see what's happening there. I'll follow up separately with the city manager about that. Just a couple other things. There was an eviction recently. It wasn't in Ward 1, but it struck me that when we get back to our work on housing and some of the renters' issues that we've talked about before, I know we have a relatively limited ability to control what happens with evictions. It's more of a county or even state issue, but since we do have funds available to help people in that situation, maybe figuring out some way to ensure that these kinds of cases come to our attention prior to an eviction happening. And, you know, there are some evictions that maybe nothing can be done about. There are others where it involves some temporary hardship that's affected the family in question. Two other things, I was also at a COG meeting today. I'm on the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Committee, and just very brief overview, the committee approved the work plan for the coming year, which is July 1st, the following year's June. Most of the targets for the area have been met. The one that hasn't is ozone, and so the efforts will be underway to try to attain the ozone required levels. And a big part of what we're doing, we talked about it some at the meeting today, is the, Virginia, Maryland, and DC have similar but somewhat separate rules on the idling of diesel vehicles, trucks and buses and so on. And there's an effort underway to try to educate drivers and the companies that they're with more and more about that, to try to address that problem, the contribution that that makes to air quality challenges and climate change. I think more generally, I urge, as I have in the past, that, and I hope this will happen, that utility companies be part of that, because we do see a lot of times trucks are waiting around. It's one thing if you're a cement mixer, which has to continue revolving until it's time for it to deposit the material, but other vehicles could be more able to control what they do. And so we'll be working on that through the committee. And then the last thing, and this is a very small thing, and I don't know whether Ms. Braithwaite could answer this, but I appreciate that some work has now been done to begin to address that small triangular-shaped area near the edge of Old Philadelphia and New Philadelphia. So it's been smoothed over and maybe planted, but maybe you can let me know separately. Is that all that's happening there, is some grass being planted, or is there other plans for that?
We have it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. If you can check, that'll be great.
Great. I just want to follow up on the point that Councilmember Kovar raised regarding the eviction. I know Councilmember Siemens has been working on this, and just to add to the Grace Love Fest this evening, Grace Wiggins in our housing department did luckily assist the gentleman who was in need, as did another resident in Tacoma Park, and we are grateful to them, though we want to look at, and I know Grace is looking at, how we can avoid these types of things in the future. In addition, I know Matt Losack of the Renters Alliance has put out a letter to the county council looking at ways that we can put in place policies to reduce these types of evictions. And so if people are interested in more information on that, I'm happy to provide it and work with my colleague, Councilmember Siemens, to look at ways that we can reduce this and avoid this happening again. And I think that's it for me. I turn over to the city manager.
Thank you. Got a number of items in my city manager comments, and I think councilmembers and residents may want to go to them at another time also on the website. I want to first note, and a lot of public works items tonight, that we have received a notice of additional cost increases for recycling. We received a notice from the operator of the Prince George's County Recycling Facility that as of the May 1 invoice, the price per ton for processing will be increasing by over $9 a ton from the current rate to 68.82 a ton. The notice goes on to say that another surcharge review is scheduled for July 1st, at which time we will be notified of any further changes based on processing costs, charges on costs. For perspective, the price per ton at the beginning of FY '18 was $32 per ton. The price increased each time there was a surcharge review. At the beginning of FY '19, the price was $34 a ton, which then jumped to $59.45 a ton in January, and now to 68.82. So in less than a year, the price has more than doubled. We typically budget for 1,300 tons of recycling per year. For FY '19, we budgeted $44,200, but in light of recent hikes, estimate that we will spend around $77,000. We are seeking other options but are very concerned about the price increases, which do seem to be a national trend for recycling. And, yeah, this is, everybody's talking about the recycling increases, but I did want to alert you that we find... we find these things out after the budget gets adopted. So, there's that.
What's driving the increase? Can you talk about that?
It's not having the recycling materials accepted, particularly by China. Another public works item, street resurfacing. There was a brief mention of that today. The city will begin our street resurfacing program next week. The work includes milling the street surface and then repaving with a two-inch asphalt layer. The process is expected to start May 28th, extend through the week of June 3rd, depending on the weather. All streets will first be milled, then resurfacing will be completed the following week. The order of the work will be as follows. Tulip Avenue between Holly Avenue and Cedar Avenue, Crescent Place, Holt Place, Second Avenue between Cochrane and Allegheny, Cochrane Avenue between Kansas Lane and Fourth, Glazewood Avenue, Glazewood Court, Linden Circle and Linden Alley, Greenwood Avenue and Winding Hill Way. All homes on the affected streets will receive notices this week. The paving contractor will post no parking signs prior to the expected workday on each street. Because most of the streets included in this year's paving are fairly short, the contractor will be doing multiple streets in one day. And we do have the information also on the project page for street resurfacing on our website. So this is our big push for street resurfacing, and so you'll see a lot of it over the next two weeks.
So access to driveways and things like that, what's the expectation?
In general, there's access to driveways when they do the milling. When they do the tarring in asphalt, you don't want to do that. So they get noticed so that, you don't want to have the stuff spray up on your car. So that's a fair statement, right? Yep. So all of that is part of what we've explained. We've sent some emails to council members about it, but we'll try to keep getting the word out that we'll give notices, and we'll let you know when you don't want to drive on the road while that work is being done.
And remind us, remind us how these streets were selected. This is a process.
Right. So we have the streets actually graded through a fairly sophisticated system, and so we do those streets that I think meet fair or worse as ones that come up on the list to be addressed. So it's very systematic, and it's part of the reason that our streets look a lot better than Silver Springs streets because we do keep that up. I just wanted to address in brief responding to questions about the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk project and Aspen Avenue that were raised last week and by a message after the meeting last week. Last week, a resident brought up questions and concerns about Lincoln Avenue's sidewalk construction and about water being temporarily cut off in the vicinity of Aspen Avenue on Friday, May 10. Regarding the water being shut off, this was the result of an accidental water main break as opposed to one that intended, and this occurs when the contractor was doing stormwater work on Lincoln, was excavating, hit the water main. The water main was not marked correctly, was more shallow at that point than initially assumed based on the prior test pits. WSSC was out within an hour of the break and was able to restore water to the block before noon. Of course, it is unfortunate when a utility line is affected during the work. We and our contractors do everything we can to avoid such incidents, but there are times when it's unavoidable. In those cases, we work very quickly to notify the utility and coordinate repairs. We have a good working relationship with WSSC's area maintenance manager, and we were glad that they could address the problem so quickly. During an unexpected break that needs to be repaired quickly, notices are not delivered by WSSC. Information can be found on their website or can be provided by phone. I know I get texts because I've signed up for them. If residents have questions about their water or water quality, they should be directed to WSSC, which has an emergency call center that can be reached, and the number's 301-206-4002. The resident also asked whether the city conducts water quality tests on stormwater flowing into Sligo Creek. The city does indeed test water quality at all of our outfalls annually, per our state permit requirements. We also respond to any illegal dumping or water quality issues that come up by contacting the county and assisting in their investigation on the source of the issue. Finally, the resident noted a high number of drivers who exceed the speed limit on Aspen, and police have been notified and will be monitoring the area, and I appreciate the chief's response quickly on that matter. Regarding the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk construction project, a detailed letter has been sent to the resident who raised the issues. A summary of the information is that the project began with a request for sidewalks from residents in 2013. The project was awarded a state Safe Routes to Schools grant, which necessitates a great deal of process, documentation, and the requirement to go out to bid for a contractor rather than using a firm on retainer by the city for such work. Now, most of the sidewalk installation is complete, but some corrections are needed. Permeable sidewalk surface is yet to be installed, and thank you, Councilmember Duvalla, for noting the dates. But all of the sidewalk-related work is expected to be done by early June. Stormwater improvements are underway separately and are to address areas identified by residents and staff. The process for the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk work has taken a long time but has been done with community involvement and high-quality standards throughout. Detailed information of the plans is on the city's website. And I, this is a project that I know people wanted for years, and we kept being asked for years because this is, anytime you start reviewing involving state funds, the processing requirements for them are remarkable, and they take much longer. SHA reviews the plans for the sidewalks a whole bit, and it's something that, we appreciate the grant money, but we also recognize that it has a lot of extra pieces to it that require a lot of staff time and just time. I appreciate, in particular, this project. It looks really neat so far. Wanted to note additional information on shero installation at the council meeting.
Before you go on, can I just, can I just say one thing, which is that I was under the impression that WSSC was going to follow up with the residents. So now I know they don't do that when it's an emergency. So in the future, if this ever happens again, that a water, the water pipe gets broken during a construction project, I think it would be a good idea to double back with the residents and let them know what they can do about it.
Let's talk about it. It's sometimes really hard. It just depends on the, depends on the, on the timing and the staff available at the time when that happens. So I understand, but I don't know that we can always do it. At the council meeting of May 15th, Councilmember Kova asked for additional information regarding the installation of bike sheros on the community center parking lot and Cedar Avenue. The cost of the installation was $14,000. Sheros are a traffic control device with standardized colors and shapes. Like traffic signs, lane markings, stop bars, et cetera, traffic control devices are not subject to historic preservation review. They were not addressed in the review of streetscape design. Funds for bicycle and transportation safety markings are in the budget each year. This year, part of the money was to help mark the routes identified in the recently adopted county bicycle plan. Cedar Avenue is a shared bike route specifically identified in the plan. As was noted last week, city staff did not provide advance notice that although the discussed bicycle pop-up lane was not able to be pursued during Bike Month, the related sheros would be, and I apologize for that lack of notice. You have some additional questions?
Yeah, so if I could just, and I appreciate that information. So one of the questions I had was, so the $14,000, that wasn't something that we had to vote on separately, given the size of the contract, or?
It's, I'll have Ms. Braithwaite answer the question.
That is an item included in our indefinite quantities contract, both the concrete, asphalt, and pavement markings. So we have two on-call contractors that can provide those services. Council's already authorized use of those contracts and funds are available as long as funds are available.
So I think the biggest concern I have is I'm not an expert on what type of markings are appropriate for what type of, of street and so on. One of the things I've heard is that depending on the width and type of street, different markings are appropriate. And I think I passed on to you an email from a resident who was suggesting that that could have been off in this case. So maybe you can check on that when you get a chance. To me, maybe they're fine and maybe they're not. I don't know. I've heard people who like them. I've heard people who don't, and a lot of people who maybe don't care. But we didn't really have the opportunity to look into it, and as a result of this not being shared in advance. And to me, that's, you know, that's the big issue. And I have heard from a lot of people who say it's not really clear what's supposed to happen. There are already signs on the, you know, street signs on Cedar saying, "This is a bicycle route." Now, some people are interpreting these, maybe they're not familiar with the shero concept, as a bike lane, but maybe only a one-way bike lane. Others, when they come up where that curve occurs on Cedar, are pulling way wider so they don't drive where the markings are. And of course, pulling wide around kind of a blind curve is not good safety in terms of the, in terms of the cars that might be coming in the opposite direction. So if they're safety-related, I'm a little bit worried that they're not necessarily producing that result. And again, we didn't get a chance to go through these things. So the question is, I mean, would you say that's just it, or can we continue to work on figuring out if this is exactly what we need here?
Well, I certainly want to address that there's a safety issue, and so I'm happy to, I think that's a very important topic to talk about. I do think, well, let's continue to talk offline about it and see, I mean, they are installed. I appreciate that they're installed and they are part of the system, but if there's a, if there's a particular issue or whatever, I'm happy to talk about it.
Well, the other piece of it is it's a narrow street, as those who are familiar with it know. And even now, in many cases, particularly with the block that's closest to the district, basically between Tulip and Carroll, cars typically can't pass two by two there, and you have to pull over and let someone go by. So it's pretty narrow already. That doesn't make it unsafe per se for bikes because the speed, the cars go there tend to be relatively slow, and there are speed bumps. But I just think with the pulling over activity that's taking place, particularly when cars in that last block do jam in there, there are, there are safety concerns there as well. So I, I'm just worried that along with everything else, and I'm not having talked about it in advance, this is not serving the intended purpose. And so I'd really like to continue to work on that, if I could. Okay, thank you.
And kudos to the staff that put together Celebrate Tacoma. A lot of people put a lot of time into it. The mechanical bowl was very popular. I know a certain child of the deputy city manager who came just for that. So we appreciate, we appreciate the, all of the different activities, the Zalea Awards.
Did I, excuse me, did she call you a child?
I said his child.
Oh, your child.
But, you know, it could, it could work. And so we also, we want to give a special thank you to John Webster, the rec department, for his coordination. Thanks also to the Public Works and Police Department. Next year, it'll be a combination with, like, in a year, with the, with the Fourth of July, but doesn't mean it will be any less fun. It'll be even more fun. So we appreciate, and I know the rec staff in particular really enjoys doing the games and things with the kids, and it was, it was very enjoyable. And the food was good. At least what I ate was really good. So that's it. Thank you.
Terrific. All right. We'll move now to our work session. We have two this evening. The first is a discussion of the proposed closure of one lane of Laurel Avenue.
And we have a little bit of a presentation to walk us through it, but I want to start by saying, there was obviously a lot of communication about the, this item coming on to the city council agenda. One of the things that caught me a little bit by surprise was the idea that in coming to the council to broach the idea and have a discussion and see how we might do planning and how we might have politi, have public conversations about this and discussions, that it was taken as that, you know, city staff has already figured this out. We've already spent lots of time on it. Here's the plan. Please say yes. And I, and I want to say that's not the case. It's part of our collaborative approach of staff and council and the public. We wanted to address this as, as an idea that was raised to us, that there were some reasons for doing it, with some complaints that we had received about the difficulty, for example, of getting out of your car on the passenger side of a car, if you're parked in that area. Is there a way to make this a better place? And so we spent just a little bit of time looking at this. Jamie Ernst is here from the planning department to walk us through some of this, and then we just want to open conversation.
Great. Thank you. And I just want to say thank you very much to Ms. Ernst and really just apologize for some of the comments that have been received regarding this proposal. I think we want to encourage our staff to come up with new ideas and to be innovative. Sometimes we may agree with them, sometimes we may not, but being overly critical before we even hear the ideas, I think stifles innovation. And we've, we're known in this city for our innovative policies. Doesn't mean we're always going to agree, and we need to critically look at things, but I just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing and that our staff is doing on these issues, and I look forward to the presentation tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to echo the city manager that we're bringing this in front of council to get your feedback and guidance on how to move forward. This isn't something we're implementing tomorrow. This is a proposal to get your feedback specifically. So I wanted to just begin with a list of the council priorities. We feel that this proposal meets a lot of them, including like a livable community for all, an environmentally sustainable community, and will help improve the quality of life. And I also wanted to highlight that the council passed a climate change emergency resolution in March of this year, and something that was called out in that resolution was supporting alternate forms of transportation, and we hope that this proposal would also help encourage that. And the proposal largely is the temporary or permanent closure of the northbound side, so the eastern side of Laurel Avenue, to vehicular traffic specifically. And the aim with this is to create a bike and pedestrian plaza with increased use of public space. The parking would remain on the southbound side of the street, so the street closest to the church, and the traffic would, and I'll show a graphic, on the next page of how we envision traffic being redirected, would go around the Seventh Day Adventist Church on Carroll Avenue and Eastern Avenue. And the aim here again is to activate public space, to encourage communal use, and I'll go through some more benefits that staff envisions in a next slide. So the proposed traffic reconfiguration is here. Drivers would be redirected down Carroll Avenue and then through Eastern. And I know there's been some concern about potentially traffic going through neighborhood streets, and one of the solutions we have for that is we can contact Google Maps, contact Waze, contact these other wayfinding apps to alert them of the closure and also let them know to not route drivers through the neighborhood but through Carroll, and that's an option that is available to us. We also realize that it's necessary to coordinate with DDOT on this project and maybe adjust signaling time, since a lot of these streets are within the District of Columbia. And so the benefits that we envision here is, again, as I mentioned, an increase in usable public space, not just by vehicles but by pedestrians, by patrons of the businesses on Laurel Avenue, and by cyclists. We also feel that this would increase the visibility of businesses on Laurel Avenue because there would be a more active streetscape and would also increase access by pedestrians and by cyclists. The space could also be programmed for both formal and informal gatherings. There would also, as again mentioned, dedicated space for pedestrians and encouraging non-motorized transportation, so biking, walking. Laurel Avenue is less than half a mile from the Tacoma Metro Station, so encouraging those multimodal transportation connections. Again, fostering street-level neighborhood interaction, people out of their cars, interacting on the street, walking into local businesses, providing a space to linger and interact with each other. We also have the support of the Old Tacoma Business Association. I also spoke to the Seventh Day Adventist Church, who was also supportive of this proposal, as well as the property owners and business owners on Laurel Avenue. So it would be a collective effort to help program the space, and we realize the importance of having planned active events to make sure that this space is revitalized and used. And there are some potential issues that have been identified, and I imagine we'll bring up more as this conversation progresses, but similar concerns with parking and traffic. There will be the loss of approximately nine parking spaces, two of which are handicap spaces, and the idea is that the handicap spaces could be moved across the street to the southbound side by the church. And again, the property owner on Laurel Avenue said that he would also be willing to create an additional handicap space in the rear parking lot where the ramp to the post office is. So that would be creating an additional space. There are also, again, as I mentioned before, the potential for traffic to reroute through neighborhood streets and causing unwanted traffic. The farmer's market is every Sunday The farmer's market is every Sunday, and I could be wrong, but I haven't heard about many catastrophic issues with traffic there. And again, we can work with Waze, work with DDOT, and work with Google Maps to help, help adjust to that transition. And again, with parking, there is a parking lot to the rear of the Laurel Avenue businesses where the first hour is free. There are also 101 spaces on the district side at Laurel and Aspen, and that's a surface parking lot that's operated through Park Mobile, but that is a public lot as well. So what we're asking for through this work session and council meeting is discussing the, what the closure options are and what the public engagement process for that. Looks like we have reached out to business owners and property owners and the church in the immediate area, but we'd like to do a more robust public engagement process. We'd like to walk through what that would look like. The closure could be for a set period of time to test the success before this idea is made permanent. We could do a seasonal closure as one option. We've also partnered with the Old Tacoma, planned to partner, and have discussed this with the Old Tacoma Business Association regarding programming and making sure that space is activated and used. And again, as I mentioned, the business owners and the property owners have all expressed their support, and we plan to work closely with them. And I'd also like to mention, nothing that we're suggesting is a permanent infrastructure change. It would all be reversible and just involve some sort of closure device on both ends of the street. So if this ends up being something that we test and ends up being unsuccessful, it's something that is reversible. So I wanted to make sure to point that out as well. And so now I'd love to take your questions and discuss this, and if there's something I can't answer, I'm happy to get back to you.
I'd like to add just a couple of things. One is that handicap accessibility is very important. And right now, if you are on, if I park on the southbound side of Laurel Avenue, which I do at times, it really does, you do run through a gamut of things to get to, through parked cars and tree boxes, et cetera, to try to get over to the post office, et cetera. And, and that's awkward. The tree boxes were put up to protect the trees from the car doors and people getting out, but now you can't get out of your cars. We've had a lot of expense to repairing the tree box, the, the tree fences that go around those. And, and it seems like every couple of weeks, we're being called out to do some more repairs there. So somehow, some things aren't working well. One of the other things that I think this should be considered is a very low-budget economic development initiative. It's a test, see how, how it helps, how it might be replicated in other areas of the city. And it's not likely to take a lot of staff time or infrastructure work, some ballers or other kind of closure methods. One thing that has been suggested as well is that there, if it happens, it could happen, it could happen seasonally, it could happen during certain days of the week, it could happen on a more continuous basis. But if it turns out that we do it and people like it, a more significant change to the infrastructure could eventually take place. So the median may not be the right thing there. And it may be that, you know, you can change all of the street. There's nothing like that that's been played with at this point. I don't, I'm not anticipating that, but I'm not ruling it out either, that, you know, after you do the low-cost versions of pilots or whatever, you could come back and say, you know, maybe with a grant or some other kind of business contribution or something, a different approach could be done. For example, and this is, I don't know that I recommend this, but for example, you could take out the median and you could have two-way travel closer to the church and, and more public space closer to the stores. So there are some other kind of more expensive options that could be done if that's something that ends up being desired. But what I'd love to hear, and I know Ms. Ernst would like to hear, is what are your thoughts? And what are your thoughts about how do we, how do we talk about this in the, with the community, get community feedback? Is it something you want us to spend any time on at all?
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Ernst, I just had a question because I know the city manager knows this. Every time we've raised this idea regarding people who may be mobility-challenged, getting out, I mean, I have noticed, I know a lot, people talk about the post office a lot and the bank, and in particular, right now, where that handicap parking space is, it actually is difficult getting out of your car there because of where the trash can is, the park bench, and then the spot actually right in front of it. It's almost nearly impossible to get out on the passenger side because of where the two mailboxes are and other things. I'm glad to hear that Mr. Ursiola is open to the idea of adding an additional space near the back of the ramp. I've actually talked to people who access, are more likely to access the post office that way if they do have issues. But my other concern is actually the bank and getting to, near the banks. Have you thought about that part at all?
We haven't interacted with the bank yet, but certainly, I think if this moves forward, we'll reach out to them and talk about potential complications.
Yeah, I would think that would be just a good place because I do know that those seem to be, they're both on the ends of the street. And so I think that might be, if, if we do move ahead with this proposal, to sort of talk to the, the bank and assess what might be needed there. The other question I have before I turn it over to my colleagues is, and I don't know, you may not have thought through this yet, but in terms of, if we do decide to go through with a pilot, what are some ways that you would look at, like figuring, like testing the trap, like the overflow of traffic or other things? I mean, there's a lot of work going on Eastern right now, as we know, that work as...
Yep. We don't want to do this while the construction work's going on. I mean, that's, I just, you know, I think people certainly are very tired and frustrated with the construction work. I know, I actually got routed down northbound Laurel Avenue yesterday because of the construction work, and I try to avoid Laurel as it is. So this isn't a time to, to count cars. It isn't a time to do this kind of work. But just, just noting that we want to make sure that people actually can get around.
Mm-hmm. Good. Yeah, because I was, yeah, that, what's happening on Eastern Avenue is really a pain. I have some other questions, but I'll let, I'll turn it over to my colleagues for a moment. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for thinking innovatively and trying to come up with some new ideas. I do want to just sort of take a moment to talk a little bit about process because that is something I've heard a lot from Ward Three residents. And I absolutely understand that we need to have a, a place where the conversation starts. I think a lot of people feel like, or felt like, before they sort of realized that's where this process was, that they hadn't been consulted, they hadn't been a part of this discussion. And I think part of that is because a lot of times we do have a work session on things that are sort of one or two steps away from a vote. And it, it is something that we, staff have done a lot of work on, and, and you know, oftentimes we have a, a work session on, you know, committee appointments, and then the next week we vote on it, for example. And so I think there's a perception that if something's on the agenda and it's a work session, that this is something that is a little further along in the process. So I don't have a great answer for exactly how to remedy that. I think that's something I'd like to hear from residents about, is how to make that clearer.
We should probably have, we should probably have made it clearer in the agenda packet, too.
Yeah, I think that would help. And I, you know, I could have made it clear in my weekly update as well, when I sent it out to people. But I think that, there definitely is a sense that particularly people who might be impacted by traffic diverting from this really feel like they need to be consulted, and I think that's absolutely appropriate. And that's something that is probably one of the biggest issues we need to look at with this as we're considering it. I think possibly moving forward, ideas like this could maybe be run by the parking committee that we're talking about formulating, to look at the impact on parking. The new Complete Safe Streets Committee might have a role in, in taking a look at it and looking at traffic impacts in other parts of the city. In the future, if there's something similar to this, maybe it would be a part of the discussion related to the economic development plan, and, and that would be an opportunity for us to sort of have a very initial conversation about it before it gets to a work session level. But I think kind of the big thing I'm hearing from people is just a lot of concern about what this is going to potentially do if, if it moves forward to traffic on the side streets, particularly Walnut and Westmoreland, but also Elm and a few of the others that would eventually get traffic if they're cutting through to 410. And I think it would be very helpful to get traffic counts. We could potentially use the, the police traffic counter to get traffic counts on Laurel, as well as maybe on some of those other streets as well, just to sort of get a baseline and understand where, where traffic is right now. I agree with the mayor 100% about the, the timing of this regarding the construction. Residents have been put through a lot and are continuing to be put through a lot in the Wacko neighborhood and the Pinecrest neighborhood due to the construction on Eastern, and it's not ending anytime soon. You know, best-case scenario, Pepco finishing and DDOT finishing their project is probably 2021. So if we're looking at not doing something like this until that's over, that's pretty far down the line. I think that all of that needs to be taken into consideration and looked at pretty closely. Let's see. I love the idea of alerting Waze and Google Maps, but I, I'm not sure that that is going to be successful. I mean, I would love us to just do that in general and say, hey, none of our streets work. They're all closed. But if there's a way to do that, that, that's great. So parking study. And then I think other alternatives just should be looked at as, as this is looked at. If Laurel is closed for a period of time, maybe it's, maybe it's a Sunday for the whole day rather than just the morning. Maybe it's the weekend. Maybe it's daytime hours, and then during rush hour, peak traffic times, it's open or something like that. I, I think it would be useful to look into what sort of impacts that would have on confusing drivers. Obviously, you don't want to create a situation where people don't know what to expect, but those, I think, should be taken into consideration. And I think also looking at whether a, a turn restriction on Walnut could be considered at the same time, and I, that's something that may or may not be appealing to residents who live there. It definitely would inconvenience them. I do think there's the potential for that to maybe improve overall cut-through traffic. You know, again, you have to look at the impacts on other streets, but I, I'd like to take a look at that as we're looking at this as well. And then I, the city manager alluded to this a little bit, but I wondered if there was any opportunity to either keep the northbound lane but shift it to the other side, or I don't think it's as ideal to have the public space on the other side. But I, I think the northbound traffic is actually the traffic that's a little more significant there rather than the southbound traffic. I might be wrong, but my sense is that you can sort of easily divert around that if you're going southbound. And I have done that a few times myself when there's been construction there. I don't see a lot of cars continuing straight from Carroll onto Laurel there, going southbound. But the northbound seems more significant and more likely to result in cars cutting through the neighborhoods. So if there's any, any possible opportunity of retaining that northbound but not the southbound, or shifting the lanes a little bit, that would obviously probably require some more engineering, but I think that would be worth looking into. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Ernst, for putting this together. How long would you run a pilot if we went forward with this? Would this be for a couple of months? Would you break it up in the summer, in the winters?
I mean, that would be something we could certainly discuss if this project moves forward, is how we, if we want to do a seasonal pilot. We certainly want it to be long-term enough where drivers can get used to it and the traffic patterns would adjust versus like a one-off weekend sort of closure. But that's something we would certainly like to get community input on and council input on if it is a temporary closure. What's the ideal length of time for that? But we certainly want it to be long enough where both local drivers and out-of-town drivers get used to the closure.
And so you must have some idea of what success looks like for a pilot. Can you tell us what that would be? I mean...
You mean length of time or use or...
Just use, I mean, what is it, the number of people that come to the, to the area? Is it, are you going to do surveys with people? And, I mean, what is it that you'd say, hey, by closing this street from vehicular traffic, this was a success?
Right. Well, the, the Project for Public Spaces, which is an organization that advocates for activated public space, they define success of public space as those that are accept, accessible and engaged in activities and comfortable and sociable. So there's a high degree of people that are interacting, that there are active amounts of activities, that the space is easy to get to and move around, and that it's comfortable. So certainly, surveys of people using the space would be a good marker, merely observation and seeing how the space is being used now versus how it could be used later. It's hard to put quantifiable number on how we would say this is a successful space versus an unsuccessful space, but certainly that it's programmed, that it's active, and that it's lively would be an indicative measure of success, I think.
Yeah, you wouldn't want it just empty. The other thing is also, if, are you getting complaints or not? You know, is this diverting traffic and causing problems elsewhere? That, that would also, that may not necessarily say that the area's well-used or not, but is the pilot working? You may say that there's too many complaints, and so you don't want to do it.
Right. And if traffic becomes to a level that's insurmountable, then that would obviously not be a measure of success, and we would need to rethink.
You know, one thing you could consider is talking to the business owners and see if they've had an increase in sales. How would it be quantifiable? Another thing is, you know, some residents have complained about the cut-through traffic. Have you thought about any other ideas of how to mitigate that?
I mean, that's certainly something we could work with on the, work with the police on to maybe increase enforcement and have additional signage to direct people, like through our ideal route, which would be Carroll to Eastern and not cutting through the neighborhoods. Those would be the immediate suggestions that I have.
Okay. And then just finally, I'd just say that, you know, you should maybe have a meeting with the community association, WAKE or whatever, and see if you could talk to residents about your ideas and make sure that they're part of what we're going to do going forward. Because, you know, I was at a meeting for the co-op, and there was an anxiety about this, this item on the agenda, even though it's just a, a work session. So the more you can talk to people in the neighborhood, I think would be better. Thank you.
Certainly, I understand.
Great. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Thanks for presenting, Ms. Ernst. I agree with a, a number of the comments that Councilmember Kostick mentioned, but I'm still going to say some of the same things anyway. But, but I, in a broader context, I just want to say, others have said, this is not something we're ready to make a decision on today. And for me, based on everything I've seen so far, I don't favor a, a complete or a long-term shutdown. I'd be open to the idea of some sort of shorter pilot shutdown, but only if we can work out a few of these other issues first. And I'm not 100% sure if we can. Certainly, I think as City Manager mentioned, with the utility projects going on, I'm, as long as the utility projects are going on in there, and then I'm against doing anything like it now. Maybe you could do a, a weekend thing, but even on the weekend, sadly, there's often utility projects going on. So I'm not sure I'd want to have a situation where we had six days of Pepco. And then, you know, maybe on a Sunday, I'd be open to the idea of, if we can work out some of the other questions, the idea of extending the shutdown that already takes place, on one side anyway, for, for the farmer's market. But I know, in talking to some of the business owners about it, they don't necessarily feel that's a good time to judge, since at that point, things are kind of quiet. Now, maybe if people knew that on a random Sunday, there was well announced that there would be some sort of activity taking place there, programming or something, maybe people would be there. But that, I think, is something that has to be taken into account. I, I am concerned about the, the disabled situation, and it seems if none of the options are, are, are great, having to drive into the back and then take a, a longish walk to get to the post office doesn't seem ideal. Having difficulty getting out of the current ones, I think is what the mayor was saying, that doesn't seem great, and particularly getting out into traffic if you're the driver, but also parking on the other side of the street and then having to cross the street. None of those seem perfect, and I think we may want to check with some people in organizations that... that work on that set of issues and/or the members of the community who live here to see if they have ideas about that. But I think that's a big challenge and one that we have to work on. You know, we talked the other day about our overall parking process and our desire to come up with a parking management scheme, and I think this would be best to be included within that because I'm a little bit nervous about, while we're thinking about that and trying to find ways of potentially maximizing parking or changing the way we do parking, agreeing to lose nine spaces right off, even though I acknowledge there are other spaces nearby, but people tend not to want to go do that unless we have better signage showing where they are, which I think should be part of any parking management plan. And that gets to the DC coordination that you mentioned. I think we have to have better coordination with them certainly on this. The detours, if you can call it, again, the slide that shows that one. So that detour with that sharper-than-90-degree turn is troubling to me. And the other thing I would add is that it's particularly troubling because for cars that are coming along Carroll toward where that sharper turn is, that intersection, and this is something that should probably be fixed anyway, it's been mentioned to me by one of the business owners there, the traffic light doesn't really stop you at the right place, so people end up kind of plowing into that intersection without really knowing where they're supposed to stop. It's kind of the very last few feet of Montgomery County, I think, and...
Going towards DC.
Going towards DC, and the traffic light is at the far end of the intersection instead of the front of the intersection. So I've seen it myself, I've done it myself, people pull halfway into the intersection not knowing where to stop. If they're sitting there right when these cars are coming around, that would be a total impossibility to make that even work. I do think for the traffic detour into the neighborhood, I don't get the impression that Waze or GPS would help us too much with that, and I think it's a fair point coming up Westmoreland, it's very hard to make that turn, so I'd be cautious about that. I also wonder, and maybe we can just get the answer, are we allowed to restrict access to a federal post office? I'm not really sure about that.
There aren't restrictions.
There aren't restrictions, okay. And I would like, I think Councilmember Kostic mentioned this also, Safe Roadways, or I guess we already approved the new name, the Safe Complete Streets Committee to look into that. In the longer run, if we ever did something like this, I actually do think, as several of my colleagues said, it could make more sense to squeeze things over and have the two lanes touching each other on the street side, going in both directions. Then you'd have the same amount of space that you're talking about or close to it here, but you wouldn't lose that other lane. But again, for me right now, until some of the issues I just mentioned can be resolved, I'd be willing to test this out on a pilot basis, but not like a long, multi-month pilot basis. I think it would make more sense to test it out. Test it out first, when traffic isn't bad, just to see what it's like, and then we can gradually work our way toward it, again, if the utility thing isn't happening. So that's a lot of caveats, but that's where I am right now. Thanks.
Councilwoman Circe.
Thank you so much for being innovative, and I know I've seen in other cities with far more traffic than us, and they figure out ways to do this and do it successfully. So I'm excited about the possibility of kind of thinking through options. I do want to echo some of the sentiments that my colleagues have raised. One, in my mind, when I think of a pilot, an ultimate goal of a pilot, in my view, is wider spread applicability. So how can we take this case and expand it to other places in the city, right? So if that's one of the goals, and this is our first shot, then we need to make sure that all of our bases are covered and we're thinking through all of the different checkboxes, for lack of better words, for traffic, community engagement, business engagement and retention, because we're assuming that closing off a street will actually benefit businesses, but it might not. You know, it just depends on the types of businesses that happen to be there. And, you know, so trying to think through those things and what would be a process that we would use, not just for this case, but also for other locations. And I do think we're a little too ahead of the game by proposing this pilot now, primarily because we still need to finalize the open space management plan. I think it's important for us to know where we need public space and to really have thought through where ideal locations could be. We've talked about the parking management work. This fits within that scheme, as my colleagues have said, understanding the implications of, you know, removing nine spaces or thinking through alternative ways in which we can leverage parking spaces. We're assuming now that if we get rid of this nine, it's not that big of a deal because you have some across the street, but we still need to kind of think about what the implications of not having that nine would be in a broader scale. And as was also mentioned, the housing and economic, really the economic development piece, right? So it's not just, how do we block the street off to make more people there, but how do we actually energize that commercial area such that people don't just walk through, it's like a normal sidewalk, but they're actually staying longer, engaging more with the businesses? So it would mean more than just cutting off the street. It might mean working more with OTBA and others to have more activities that would actually engage and kind of activate that new space. Otherwise, you could have just empty space that people aren't visiting, right? So I think that this is great in terms of kind of thinking through what pilot opportunities might exist, but I would echo that when we're, when we propose this and we really start moving it forward, that we're taking all of these different nuggets from the various plans that haven't been finalized just yet, but we take those various nuggets, and then we pull them together and say, okay, how can this pilot, cutting off this street, address all of these different nuggets from these different plans? Also, how can we make sure that from an implementation perspective, we're learning something about how to duplicate this somewhere else? And so that's why I think that there are some aspects of what we have here that's great in terms of thinking about, hey, let's just try it out, but trying it out without an endgame in mind and how we can actually learn from it and replicate it somewhere else, it's just a one-time thing, right? So I would just encourage, you know, you all to kind of think about those aspects. And then when we're talking about this proposal again, we're talking about it from the perspective of how it would inform all of these other strategies that are noted in the various plans that have been finalized or closer to final.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala.
Yes. Thank you for putting this forward. I have heard some from residents who are concerned about traffic, but I have also heard from other residents who think this has got potential. And I would say the biggest single comment I've gotten is the concern about how to work out the handicap access, particularly to the post office. I've also noticed that since this idea got floated, that the business community has stepped up and put in written comment that they at least think that this has got some potential to generate some business for them. So I agree that is, you know, that should be one of the goals of doing this, is to give that area a boost, maybe during slow times, maybe. There's a lot, as you've heard, there's a lot of loose ends, but I'm not ready to abandon the idea completely, I guess is the bottom line here. And can we say this again about when and how we might do traffic counts to see how the, to see, and I like particularly Councilmember Smith's idea about working with the police to find out, get their input on how that would all work out.
And so we've done traffic counts...
On, say, a Saturday night or a Sunday afternoon. Yeah, go ahead.
We did traffic counts just for Laurel from April 4th to the 15th, just on the northbound side, but I certainly think it's a good idea to expand those counts to the adjoining neighborhood streets as well, so we have a more comprehensive picture, and we can certainly move forward with that. And I can also forward all of you just the traffic counts for Laurel that indicate more of the peak time.
Just as a summary, what do they show?
I mean, as expected, the peak times are eight to nine and nine to 10, and then five to six. The AM peak has an average of 228 vehicles, and the PM peak has an average of 306 vehicles. And that's just for the northbound side of Laurel Avenue. But I can forward this and make it public, and we can request traffic counts.
That's weekdays, not weekends.
Yes.
Right, and I don't, I mean, one of the things we do have to just double-check, or maybe it's noted there, is, you know, what was construction like at that time? Because it's really, it's really different right now than it's been, so...
Right, and that's not indicating what the construction level was.
We can do some of these traffic counts, but I think we have to be really careful about...
We should be waiting.
What's the situation around to do them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bringing this to us. I love new ideas, but I always like to look at it and say, well, what's the real goal? And you have a couple of goals listed in the cover page here, but I'm not sure it gets to the real goal. Is it to increase business in the area? Is it, what are kind of the bottom-line goals?
Yes, to increase, to increase public space and to increase business activity.
Okay, activity meaning sales or just people?
Both.
Okay.
I mean, typically, an increase in people would correlate with an increase in sales.
Okay, so it seems appropriate, as was suggested, I think Councilmember Smith suggested, you know, tracking the revenues before and after the project to see whether we are really increasing sales. Anyways, I just, again, I agree with Councilmember Smith and DiBala that working with the police early on is important, both from gaining from their experience with traffic counts and things like that, but also their opinions as we move forward. And I also hope that you're also talking with the planners in the District of Columbia, since it is, they're obviously involved in changing traffic patterns. Anyways, I support the work. I think it's going to be interesting to see how it moves forward, and I admire you for coming before the council, because I just saw your workload increased by tenfold. Thank you.
And actually, one other thing regarding construction, that Councilmember Seaman's comment reminded me, is this construction that's going to happen on the DC side over near the metro and that whole area. So that's just something else we should keep on our radar, because that will impact how people get through here as well. Let's see, Councilwoman Kostic, do you have something else?
Yeah, I just have one final item. As I mentioned earlier, the Wacko Neighborhood Association is meeting next week on Thursday at 7:30. If somebody is available, if you're available to come and speak with people and hear some of their concerns regarding traffic, I think that would be great.
Great. So I think you got a lot of feedback. What I'm hearing from my colleagues is generally that we're all still interested in looking at this as a potential pilot moving forward. There was talk of making sure that we're working with the Complete Safe Streets Committee, as well as the, hopefully, will be formed soon, the Parking Committee, and looking at ways we can do greater outreach to members of the community. In addition, thinking about traffic and how a pilot study would track the traffic patterns, and in particular, looking at those who are, might need handicap parking and their accessibility. And I'd imagine talking even just to the post office about, and we can maybe do a mini-survey of just sort of like how many, who is accessing the post office and at what times and other things, so I think...
If I can say a couple of things. So one of the ideas of this idea for pilot or whatever was not to put a whole lot of staff time into it. We do have lots of work. And so what I'd like to do is take the comments that I heard today and work with staff and identify a good approach to go forward, and then we'll send it back to the council just to kind of confirm if it makes sense. If there's something that ends up looking like it's going to take a lot of staff time, I'd like to bring that back, because I'm not necessarily trying to add work when it's not something that's, it does meet a lot of goals, but it also wasn't really discussed as a heavy part of a work plan. So I want to be thoughtful about how we look at that.
Sounds terrific.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we will move on to our next work session, and that is the, one of, I'm sure, many discussions of our budget process moving forward. We wanted to kind of do a recap and a review of how our 2020 budget process went. And am I turning it over to, no, okay. I didn't know what was going on with the computer there.
Oh, he was just turning off the, they have some issue with the, they were just taking...
Did I skip one first? I'm sorry. Sorry, Ms. Brayley, sorry.
She really just wants to stay here forever and not go on her own vacation.
I know, because you're actually going, you're taking a couple of days off. I know, you're like watching that clock. Sorry, my apologies. I skipped discussion of ordinance, awarding a contract for surface restoration of the Community Center pedestrian bridge. My apologies.
This is just an opportunity to provide a little more information, answer any questions in preparation for this coming up for a council vote. It's proposed to be a single reading ordinance because funds were put in the budget in fiscal year 19 for this work. You may recall that, I guess it was two years ago, we did a resurfacing and concrete restoration in the lower-level parking lot, that police area parking lot. Some of the same conditions that impacted that concrete we're experiencing on the pedestrian bridge. I will say, the bridge has only been built once. We haven't done anything else. It was part of the construction of the Community Center expansion in 2006. At that time, there was a community interest in the commemorative bricks, and they were selected to be put on that bridge. As it turns out, that was a fateful decision, because that created a weak point in the bridge surface and was the beginning of the end of the longevity of that area. So you'll notice if you walk across the bridge and look at it, the first half of the bridge is okay, and then you get to the middle half and it's just, surface has gone to pot. Because of the, the bricks were set in, the pavement, to provide a smooth surface on top, even though that area below was waterproofed, it does hold water, and because of the water in that area, it's accelerated the deterioration of the concrete. So in order to proceed with a resurfacing and a restoration of the concrete in that area, we proposed removing the commemorative bricks and moving them to a location on the grass on either side of the entranceway. Right now, when you walk, you know, access the bridge, the first 10 feet or so is on ground. The benefit of that, of course, is to not be having the bricks suspended in an area that's a concrete structure, and instead putting them over a sand base in a place where water can pass through them into the ground below without creating that ponding water situation. I have talked with Howard Cohn and some other members of the folks that were involved in that process. They're fine with relocating the bricks. I realized on the cover sheet I, I called them combative bricks. Under environmental considerations, they're not combative. They were meant to be commemorative. I don't think they're going to create much fight for us in that relocation process. Yeah, I, boy, I've chalked up a number of errors on my cover sheets, so we're going to have somebody revise, review my work in the future. The process, other than removing the bricks, will then be to basically scour that surface level of concrete in the section of the bridge that is in poor condition. They'll do that with a power, power spray that just scours off the top level of concrete, and then they'll resurface that brick, resurface the concrete. We have talked to a number of concrete restoration companies. Apparently, they're very busy, so we were only able to get one of the three vendors that we talked to to provide a proposal. As it turns out, it was the same company that did our lower-level parking area. We were very satisfied with their quality of work. They were very thorough, and we think they did a very good job. So we're very comfortable with proceeding with them. The cost came in just slightly higher than what we had estimated when we developed the budget for this. I think it's $34,000 instead of the $3,000. I think it's 34,000 instead of the 30,000 that we had identified. The funds for it are intended to come out of the Facility Maintenance Reserve, so those are capital budget funds that are set aside for facility improvements. And I think that's pretty much all I had in regard to this item.
Great, anybody have any questions? All right.
One, one quick thing, is it a safety concern, or is it just a degrading concern?
Well, it could become a safety concern, as the surface of that concrete level is getting rougher and rougher. Could increase slips and falls. And anytime you have water standing on a, on a bridge surface, it's not ideal. But the bridge is in no danger of collapse or, you know, any significant hazard. It's more just a trip and slip and fall situation right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. So, so the, the reason that you think the other two didn't bid was because people are busy right now?
Yeah, they said they have a full schedule through the summer and wouldn't be able to consider this work until the fall.
And was there any particular explanation for being 34,000 instead of 30? And, and did you say where off the bridge the bricks would go?
Uh, right now, we envision on either side of the lead walk as it enters to the bridge now. We have a pretty wide expanse of grass there on either side that they could be located in.
Okay, thank you.
I actually think that's a great place, because people cut, throw that way anyway, all the time, and it gets really worn and muddy, so that's a really, that's a great idea. I think we are done, Ms. Braithwaite, so enjoy your long weekend. All right. Now, we will move to our final work session of the evening, which is reviewing our budget process for FY '20. Before we begin, I want to draw people's attention to the cover sheet, because there was a great deal of information. I thank the Deputy City Manager for preparing this. First, on, the first thing on the cover sheet is the process that was followed. As we'll note, in November and December of 2018, begins the internal process to develop personnel budgets, capital and equipment budgets, and preliminary meetings with council members to discuss process and expectations. In January of 2019, we, they finalized the recommended personnel, capital and equipment budgets. There were staff meetings to discuss expectations for the fiscal year projections, and also council retreat meetings. Then in February, in March, there's a development of preliminary departmental budgets, presentation of proposals to City Manager, roundtable discussion between the council and senior leadership team members. We received the constant yield tax rate from the state, and that is on Valentine's Day every year. And the council adopts council priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. We finalize departmental budgets and develop the City Manager's recommended budget. Then in April, there is the presentation of the City Manager's recommended budget. We have budget open houses. We had two this year, a council budget work sessions, and public hearings on the budget and tax rate. And then in May, we have, we continue the work sessions, do budget reconciliation, and adopt the annual budget. Each year, we strive to do better than the year before. In particular, there were a number of things that were put in place this year. I just want to review them in terms of the budget documents. Several improvements were made, including provision of a more detailed breakdown of certain budget expenditures in each department and division. For example, more, more information on services and charges, supplies and items, and items that were traditionally grouped together as miscellaneous were broken out. There was more parsing out of some programs that have traditionally been lumped together in departmental administration budgets, like sustainability, arts and humanity, and economic development. The goal of this was to present a more program-based breakdown and create and include a summary, and that we also created and included a summary table of the departmental and divisional program, area budget expenditures toward the front of the budget. Along with the budget project, a document, excuse me, staff also made available information from the original departmental proposals, as well as detailed budget worksheets that showed individual items in each budget line, and that's still available on the city website. Additionally, at the council work session meeting immediately following the presentation of the City Manager's recommended budget, staff provided information on the cost of certain programs, services, and events for council's information as a primer for a discussion on potential cuts to the budget. The City Manager identified programs and services that she recommended to be cut if the council desired to reduce the proposed tax rate down to constant yield. Now, moving forward, during the last couple of meetings about the budget, we have already discussed further improvements, as well as a desire to be more deliberate in discussing the budget process throughout the year, rather than just during the March-May timeframe. Some of the suggestions we've already discussed is clearly showing how the fund balances change over time, showing the percentage changes in certain budget summaries, and creating a shared budget frequently asked questions document. There's also been some interest expressed in establishing a target prior to the development of the recommended budget that is based on the constant yield tax rate and a growth index, such as the Employment Cost Index, Federal Cost of Living Adjustment Percentage, or the Consumer Price Index. And so today is our first of, I think, a number of sessions where we can talk about how to improve the process moving forward. And I would just like to add, I'll start us off by saying, in addition to the things that we've already captioned on the cover sheet, I think there was also a desire to compare the percent change in certain categories in the budget to the year before. In particular, I think the Deputy City Manager presented us with a table right before the last vote, the second vote last week, that I think was very useful. And so we just went on to incorporate that as well.
Yeah, one of the other improvements that was a budget document one was recommended last year, which was to show the capital improvement program that shows what we spent in the past, or budgeted in the past, and then going forward. So we went from a one-page-wide document to a two-page, so you could see kind of, what had we looked at in terms of sidewalk expenditures in the last couple of years versus what's being proposed, what was actually spent. And I think that was actually a very helpful change.
Yeah, and I will also just mention, to make sure everyone on the council is aware, that the Deputy City Manager and I will be meeting with David Navari and others would like to meet to discuss more how to do a pilot project on the time tracking, setting objectives, and to come back to the council with a proposal on that. And, yeah, I'll open it up for other ideas or discussion. And I think before I do that, I just want to say thank you again to the city staff, as we have said before. I, the amount of work that went into this budget this year, I just want to really thank everyone for that. I think it was a, we did, you did a great deal of work, and particularly the Q and A document, I think will be very, very helpful, so. I would like to add to the Q and A document, actually, or something. I think we need to, a better description of what the constant yield is. The constant yield is the constant yields. There's actually, I know it can be a little confusing, but there's no, there's not anything called the state certified or the state sanctioning constant yield. It is the constant yield that we receive from the state. And I think a better explanation of that might also be helpful in the Q and A. Thank you. All right, anyone want to ask further, any other ideas? Nothing? I'm going home?
I would like to note one thing that wasn't mentioned, I think, but I've heard from a number of residents, and that has to do with how do they get involved earlier in the process? And, and so one of the questions that I received after the Community Vision Budget Item, discussion that they held, was, well, how does the public communicate with the council before you set your priorities? And, and that is something that seems to kind of be missing in our, in our list.
I think that would be a good idea, and maybe having, trying to figure out when to hold something. I think the struggle I always have.
It's right, it's right, it's right at Christmas at that point, you know?
Right. And I think the struggle we always have is because normally the terms for the city council are only two years. Every other year, when we have elections, it's always hard to schedule something like, talking about priorities the week after an election, where you may have a number of new council members. So I, I, I think that's a good idea as well, is trying to figure out when we, yeah, when we can schedule those things. But I did also have that on, as well as resident input. And it may just be that, maybe after the, after we actually have the retreat meetings, that we do maybe some kind of open house on the priorities and do something like that. I don't know. I've been trying to figure out like when to be able to do that, but it might be before the council actually adopts the priorities. But in between, when we have the retreat and when we adopt it, we do some type of open house or event where we're presenting our thoughts so far on the priorities and then get feedback or something. But we can work on that for the upcoming year. Councilwoman Kostick?
Yeah, I have a couple of, probably not all that related, things to share. I want to thank staff, and particularly the Deputy City Manager, for all the work on the budget this year and the many improvements that were made. I particularly found, as the City Manager mentioned, the CIP look-back, as well as look-forward improvement, to be very, very helpful. And I, I would also like to see the percentages added to more of the graphs as well. One idea that came to me from a resident was looking for more opportunities to create graphs and charts within the budget. There are a lot of tables showing the figures, but if there are any opportunities within that to, to show things graphically or with a graph, I think that might be a useful way to just express that information and not make it quite so overwhelming.
If I could respond on that, that's been asked many times. The challenge that we have is that when we're putting the document together as a proposed document, it's a crash time. And so, so playing around with, with charts and things is hard. We do focus on it because we want to have them for the budget work sessions to present. And then when you see the final budget document, there's a lot more graphs and charts in it. But the thing that I keep hearing, and I really understand, is that it's also a really good communication tool. And so, we've, this is, this is us not having a lot of staff. We don't have a budget department, you know, that, that most cities do. And so, it's, that's been part of our challenge. So if we, if we can come up perhaps with a few that are particularly illustrative or helpful, you know, we could work on that, we, we just probably can't do a whole lot.
Yeah, and it might be that they don't go into the original budget document, but they're part of presentations during the discussions, just to help us visualize what we're looking at. I think that would be useful. I also think just process-wise, it feels a little bit like there, there isn't a lot of opportunity for public comment at the point when we're sort of voting on the reconciliation items. So maybe we could, and it kind of comes down to the end, you know, we're scrambling and getting things together, but maybe we could look at providing a public comment period the night that we're taking hand votes on reconciliation items, or, you know.
Yeah, I think this year was really hard. I'm just gonna say, with certain council, like, there was just, it was, we usually do have, like, I think, one other.
Wednesday before or something.
Yeah, so usually there is, this year was very difficult trying to schedule around everyone's schedules and making sure that council members were here for the discussion and then for the vote. So I completely take that and think in, in the future years that we absolutely should be having, and I usually like to do it like the Wednesday before, so it's like a, like we have a whole weekend and like people can really then discuss those items. But yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't know if it was just me, or if it was the, the way that the dates fell on the calendar. For whatever reason, this year, it felt to me like it took us a longer time to get into the, the smaller, specific reconciliation items than it did last year. It felt like we looked at the big picture more, which I think in many ways was useful, but then we sort of scrambled at the end to get into the littler items. So maybe that's just something for us to be aware of as we look at it next year. Other items, I, I talked with Ms. Braithwaite about this already, but I think it would be useful to have a list of potential sidewalk and street projects as we look at those capital improvement items, so that we're not just talking about 250,000 or 500,000 going, going towards improving ADA, making ADA improvements on sidewalks, but that we can specifically look at what streets that might involve, because I think that provides an opportunity for us to see which projects we feel really need to move forward and how mu, how far those funds are going to go. I would like to see us look more at this idea of quote-unquote target rate and what indicators should be used for that, I think is very important to look at. And then sort of looking towards the future and kind of ongoing work. Just as an example, looking at tonight's tree planting agenda item, it says there's funding in the budget for this, but didn't say the exact amount that was in the budget for it. And many times, the budget, the agenda items do say that, but there are also items that don't. And I think it would be useful to just regularly state how much was in the budget and where those funds were coming from, because, you know, you can go back and look, and I went back and looked in the FY '19 budget to see where the, the funds were coming from for that, but it's just easier if it's right up front. And you can see, oh, we budgeted 30,000 for this, and it's coming in at 34,000, just to sort of ballpark it. I think that would be useful. And I'm, I think, I'm glad that we have some more work sessions in mind to look at the tax credits, and we talked about the Recreation Department, some of those things. So I'm looking forward to those coming up in the future.
Great, Councilwoman Sears?
I want to echo everyone's thanks, because you all do a fantastic job of trying to make decisions around budget in anticipation of what the council will, might want to see reflected in the budget. And I recognize how difficult that is to try to anticipate. So, I know some residents think that it's just this grab-bag, but it's not. I, I completely understand that there are a lot of really difficult conversations that happen behind the scenes before we ever see the items that are proposed. One thing that I found this year that is sometimes helpful is to kind of get a window behind that veil in terms of what were some of the compromises that were made before we actually saw the proposed budget. I think that there were some things that were noted, and it was kind of like, okay, well, why, why didn't we include this? Or why didn't we include that? It was, because there was lots of conversations that you rightfully were having with staff that we kind of weren't aware of some of those, some of those compromises that were being made. And so sometimes it might be helpful not to say that we're going to necessarily okay everything, but if your divisions were to at least allow the council to know what their complete wish list is before you cut it, right? And then I could see, oh, you, you originally asked for $85,000, or you originally asked for this intern, but you were willing to, that would help me when I'm thinking through things like reconciliation, or when we're thinking through things like, well, why is this item here and something else isn't there? Because we're not really clear that, you know, staff submitted a wish list and we had to whittle it down, recognizing where we were. And this is what we recommend in terms of the items that we're gonna propose to move forward. I think right now, we just get the priority items, we don't get the full wish list. And so sometimes it's helpful, at least in my view, to see both.
I agree. I think the, the items that we shared with you were the third cut. You know, the, that wasn't a wish list. Actually, those were things that people, you know, we'd gotten down to where we really thought we would, by having those, we would advance council priorities. You know, the wish list stuff, fortunately, I have, I have department heads that don't just put bogus items, oh, I want some extra cars. You know, it just doesn't go like that. They're, they're, they're all very sensitive to the cost of things and, you know, the need to be efficient. But, but nevertheless, we, we whittled down several times. There were some wonderful things that people proposed that residents would love if we could have done them. The challenge that I have is, and it's by char, by charter, it's kind of by the, the nature of a council manager form of government, is that I am, I am to propose, I am to give you my recommended budget, based on the priorities you've shared and the sense of the needs and the financial constraints that we have. So there's a certain amount of this, like, you know. So there's a certain amount of this, like, you know, that I, I have to do that best guess to try to get as close as I can to what you've indicated that you want to see that, that makes sense in terms of practice, good management practice. Knowing that, you know, yeah, there'll still be some discussion and that there's some items that are really more council decisions, you know, with the grants, for example, or those kinds of things. There really are things that I can say, well, this general lump sum, or here's some things to look at, but, but really there's some things that just, it's not my call. But, but yeah, I, I, I like sharing that, that we've given a lot of thought to these various items. It felt like I got kicked for it this year a little bit because, you know, it, it went out and they're like, oh, it's those wish lists and all this stuff. Like, no, I said no. You know, and, and so you pull back the veil and you see other.
You see other things. But I, I, one thing that I do think is extremely important is we recognize the professional knowledge, the expertise that we have here. And we have a number of staff who are very experienced in what they do, and they recognize what needs to happen in order to really realize the goals that we've set forward. And we recognize that, and I recognize that there are going to be financial compromises that are going to have to be made in order to, to, to keep our, our budget where we need it to be.
Right.
But I do think that it's important for not just the council, but, you know, to some degree, residents as well, to understand in order to really do what you want, this is really what we need.
We need cuts a lot more.
And this is what we're proposing. So recognize, a lot of things are already hitting the cutting room floor that we think would benefit you, would benefit the city, would benefit, really help to achieve what the council is putting forward. Again, not, not trying to completely just throw out a whole bunch of stuff, but when it comes to kind of making some of these decisions about what to cut and where in the reconciliation process, it was helpful to be able to talk to staff about, okay, well, why did you propose? Like, why is this here?
Right.
And to hear, oh, well, no, we actually wanted this, but we cut it down to here because we really were hoping that at this amount, we might be able to get at least one, you know? And so being able to better understand what is fully needed in order to realize some of our priorities and some of the goals that we've set forward and some of the expectations we have, it's helpful to know some of the compromises that we're going to have to make financially in order to achieve that, if that makes sense.
Great. Councilwoman DeBala.
Yeah, a few thoughts in no particular order, but starting with, thank you for the work and thank you for the improvements that you made this year. And I thought that having the deputy city manager's involvement was value added for sure. I struggle a little bit with this because I, I think it's great that there's all this information and, and there's all this transparency and there's just all these numbers on a thick book. But I, I agree with Councilmember Kostic that, that some summary information, some visual tools to help people get our minds around this is really critical. And it's, and early on, so for example, that table that you sent out comparing certain departments with the year before, that kind of information upfront next year would, I think, really lend perspective. I, I think some of what happened this year was we had council members and residents trying to create that for ourselves, and that wasn't so useful. So I think it's better to get ahead of that, you know, in a lot of ways, so that everybody can be working off the same, the same page. That said, all the, you know, having all that information and backup in some of the tables, the, the layering behind the veil information was, was kind of neat this year. There are a couple of other ideas in here about fund balances. I think I'm one of the people that beat that to death. To the degree we can show like that capital improvement budget, show trends, the, the back and the forward, look back, look forward, I think that, that helps me. And I think it may help residents to get perspective on what the choices are and what, what the, what priorities are, might need to shift in order to, to get, to get, to stay within a budget. I, I am a fan of setting some kind of target. And I mean a target, not a firm budget's got to be within this bound. But I think it would be helpful to say, for example, constant yield plus a growth index like the ECI as a, as a baseline, and things that are needed either for maintenance or for growth or for shifting priorities, showing that above it would be very, very helpful. And I think that we can't even have that conversation about what the number would be till we see the, the February constant yield number. That, everything seems to key off of that. Maybe not. Maybe we could have that conversation as, about what a target might be.
I think.
So not to lock us into a final decision about it's going to be this way, but I think as a, rather than, here's the recommend, I understand, here's your recommended budget, that's what you feel you're required to do. But for me, it's more useful to, to, to come at it with some things above and some things below. I really appreciated your coming back with a list of programs and services that could be targeted. That's very hard, especially after you've just gotten done recommending that we do all that. So, so maybe next year, if we came at it sort of looking at it as, here's the target and here's things that are above it and below it, might be a way to get at it. So that, that's what I'm thinking about right now on that one. And I, I am interested in the time on task and I do have some thoughts. So I would, I would like to, if I'm here that week, I forget when it is, I'd like to be included in that meeting, because I'd like to see us make some progress on a pilot on that. That might be it for, for now, I think. And for our, for personnel, we're going to have a separate session on personnel. That's the biggest chunk of costs. And I really do feel that if we can understand what the current structure is and what the current, not constraints, what the current factors are that you have to deal with in setting these, making these kinds of personnel decisions, if everybody can hear that outside of, here's the budget, here's the dollar amounts we have to react to, I think that'll, that'll be very helpful. So I, I'm not sure we need to get into too much of that right now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McCovar.
Thank you. And I'm glad we're having this conversation. Look forward to others, which maybe we'll have. I think it's a good idea to have a goal or a target like we've talked about. And maybe it would even be something that would have a, a multi-year component to it, especially on things, since we have the capital projects and we generally know what they would be, that would work. And certainly for something like building up our reserves that we need to, we know what the target amount for that should be over, over a period of years, roughly speaking, as a percentage. So the, the precise number may vary, but, but we know how to do that. And, you know, at the federal level, for example, they do current services as their baseline, which is sort of, you know, providing the same level of coverage of services with a built-in inflation piece to it. I don't know enough about the different inflation, inflation indexes to know whether we should use ECI or CPI or, or something else. And I have to think more about what that target should be, but I like the idea of having a target. I agree with Councilmember DeBala that it shouldn't be literally binding on us as much as this is what we're going to seek and so that we have some flexibility to adjust that. One of the big questions has always been the assessments. And as I've mentioned a few times, it looked like this year, they did vary more than they should have or would have been expected to. And I, I think I mentioned at least one of the residents that I represent had done some review of the data and literally on the same small block of like five or six houses, depending on which year a house was purchased, they were subjected to various percentage increases that other houses weren't. And so the purchase prices, just a year or two apart, and how those translated into assessments honestly bore no relation to any sort of logical factual approach that I could see. So I think you had mentioned, Suzanne, that you weren't sure whether the, the state people.
I need to come in sometimes.
Well, maybe we could write a letter or something like that, because I understand if they're not going to come.
Yeah.
But, but I think there's enough questions out there that it would be worth having them explain and we could ask them to explore a couple of those. Now, on the constant yield, and the mayor mentioned this, and I, and I appreciate her point that constant yield is the constant yield, there are other ways, as, as some of our residents have pointed out, of measuring how much things change from year to year in terms of the assessments. But I think one of the questions that came up, if I understood it correctly from Ms. Cordes and others, was that the percentage increase of our audited aggregate amount of revenues we brought in from our property tax, that may not be the same as the constant yield. And so the percentage increases between those two figures may vary. Does that, can you just talk a little bit about that?
That's true, but it's two different, it's two different years. That's the problem.
Yeah.
So the problem is that the constant yield information that we get on Valentine's Day is from information that's compiled around in December. So it's a half year of information. They, they look back about a year and a half and they're estimating what is likely to be, what's the likely amount of property tax revenue that the city would get in by June 30? And, and the property taxes, you know, some, they come in a little bit later than that because of the way property taxes come in. But, but anyways, it's an est, so it's an estimate. By the time we're in, and so the amount that we show in the budget is the constant yield amount. It's, it's the assessment that the constant yield is based on that is calculated and estimated by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation and extrapolated by the tax rate that the council decides. So that's what ends up being our estimate of how much property tax money we'll get in for, say, FY19. We're not going to know until July or the beginning of August really how much we got in. It could be less than that amount or more than that amount. It's just our guess based on what we put in the, in that calculation a year ago. And so.
But it's not a guess. It's a, it's a, it's an estimate, right? I mean, based on.
It's an estimate. I mean, it's an estimate. And, you know, you, you don't want to be far off, but it's an estimate. And the state does a pretty decent job actually of making these estimates. But by the time you get to the next one, the next six months, the numbers have already changed. So the, so it is very disconcerting when we get the next year's constant yield sheet, the assessable base for the past year is different than what they estimated that, that assessable base is. We're never going to be able to know just from the timing of what the real number is.
But then later, when the audit is done.
Right.
It shows a different, it shows.
It'll show a different number.
A more actual number, but that's already.
But that's already.
A year's gone, gone by at that point.
Exactly.
But I think, I would just say fundamentally, budgets are always estimates.
Right.
I mean, that's, I think, you know, we had tonight with Ms. Braithwaite said they budgeted 30,000 for something and when we actually went out to bid, it was 34,000. So I, I do think sometimes we need to remember when we're doing the budgets, we are working many times with estimates. And, you know, we want to, I think the thing that we want to make sure when we have this conversation is that we're using measures that we can like, like point to, I think, you know, like the constant yield that comes from the state and then we can reassess it. And I'd like to think about how we can, and we've talked about this in the past, maybe do a deeper dive, like a mid-year, like where, where we are. And that might actually provide, I think, residents more information and help us move, have like these budget conversations more throughout the year.
Yeah, we do provide that information in the quarterly report.
Right. No, I know we do. And I feel like honest, I'm going to own it. Like, I feel like it's like, okay, quarterly report. And it's usually like we're doing a million other things. And I think maybe being more, it's not on staff, I think it's on us, quite frankly, being more conscious of when we are doing the quarterly report and really taking the time to take a step back and say, okay, this is what we're looking at. Because I do think sometimes it's just.
Well, and the other aspect of this, and you raised it, Councilwoman McCovar, is that, that the stuff is over time. And so looking at the trends, looking at how those things go, we cannot not reference the constant yield. That's a state requirement. We can't say, well, we think the constant yield should be a different number because we're required to reference the constant yield. Now, what that means in terms of your choices on some other aspects, that's.
So I'd just be, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this point to, to death, but two things I would say is, one, it would be interesting just to look at it and see, does, if you compare that to, say, the amount that we actually raised when you go back and do the audit, is one typically each year a little bit higher or does it jump back and forth? It'd be nice to know that. And then the second thing is, whatever the answer is, I think it was a fair point by residents to say, let's have that percentage increase part of our public discussion. It doesn't mean it's right or wrong, but let's just have it there. So, yeah. So just a few other things unrelated to that. On time on task, I'm fine with the idea of a pilot, but to me, a pilot doesn't mean we have everybody do it. The pilot means we have a few people do it. And I think in some conversations with residents, they say, well, you know, certain tasks, if that, all that person does is one thing, and there are some jobs where essentially that's what's involved, I'm not sure we're going to get that much in terms of an understanding with that, where others jump around a lot or work more on projects maybe over time, you know, and do a little bit on a project like, you know, trying to figure out, you said you didn't want it to be heavy staff work, but what, what to do about closing off Laurel Avenue and then maybe if Ms. Ernst spent, you know, a half hour three times a week over three months, that might be a worthwhile thing. I will say, and I've said it before, I don't think return on investment, it's nice to know more about how much all these things cost, but I don't think return on investment should be ultimately what we base it on because I don't think that's the purpose of government. And certainly in a, in a city like ours, it has a progressive government, there are some projects we do or initiatives we undertake that are to help people. And it's fine to say, okay, here's what it costs. But if it ends up, the net costs us, I think it's, that should not mean we don't want to continue doing it. It could mean that, but it shouldn't mean that. Just a few other quick things. The mention was made earlier of the document that Jason prepared, which I thought was great, showing the program percentage increases, all consolidated in one thing. They were all in the budget. They were there, but it was hard to, to look at them. So I think having that, and it didn't seem as if it was that difficult to generate that. So I think that was helpful. We've talked about this in the past and progress was made on council priorities. And I think the city manager showed at times, here's something that would cost a lot, here's something that might not cost much, here's something that have a lot of staff time, not that much. Maybe quantifying that a little bit more would help us when we come up with another one of our great council priority ideas, without really knowing how much it would have cost. And I, I think it would help us maybe say, well, you know, maybe, maybe we don't want to do that one because it's too expensive. That could be a lot of work, but I think it's worth thinking about. On the, on the question of the public being involved in the decision-making, the challenge, I think, and the mayor mentioned, you know, do we want to do another earlier in the process? Maybe someone else had too, opportunity for public engagement. I think a lot of times what happens is the engagement, and this is natural, this is human nature, people want to come out and talk when there's a vote on something. And, you know, they don't really want to come out and, and talk when something's being discussed and maybe the vote's happening in two months. That, that's not a criticism. That's just kind of an observation of how the human brain sort of can work sometimes. And so I think we should think more about maybe creative ways of getting an opportunity for people to weigh in when maybe they think it's not that imminent, why should I bother? I don't have the answer to that. And then I just had two other quick things to say. On the question of cuts, there was a document that showed, here's the cuts that were put in place versus kind of the wish list. And I, I might differ a little bit with councilmembers seriously. And I'm not sure how important it is for me to know the wish list, but I'd like to not just see the cuts in terms of, these are cuts over what the staff wanted, but these are the cuts or changes over what we had last year. That, that I think is a little more important. I don't mind knowing that stuff, but I'm fine if there's a few rounds of wish lists that we never see. Let's put it that way. And we can talk more about that. I, I don't feel passionately about that. I, I don't feel passionately about that. And then, I don't know how much control we have over this, how it's presented in the newsletter. Some people were bothered by the, at least the headline of the newsletter, because the document itself on the proposed budget and taxes seemed pretty straight up, but the headline said, you know, this is necessary, and I, I don't know if it was necessary. It could say, city manager says it's necessary.
I think that's what it was supposed to say.
Right. Or it could say, city manager proposes this, but a headline just saying, this is necessary, just maybe runs a little bit counter to how we want to do it. And again, I, I'm not saying we have total control over that because, but I, I think we have some ability to influence that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I'll be brief.
Sorry, I wouldn't.
Just a couple of things I think that we should consider for the budget, maybe my colleagues would consider an ad hoc budget committee with residents that we could maybe put together late summer, early fall. Also, I would like to start off and thank the staff for all their hard work on the budget. It does get better and better each year. One other thing I think would be important next year, that we could have like a, a road show to go into the apartment buildings with staff, some council members to talk to residents about what's going on with the budget, so that people can actually participate in, you know, some of the programming that they want to see in the city. I also would like to see us really look at time on task, residents have said that this is important. I don't know if it's necessary for us to do a pilot, but I do think we should really work to implement something for next year. And then finally, I would like us to come up with some type of index that we say that we're going to try, just like we say, we want 17% of our, of our reserves, some type of index, whether it's cost of living, inflation rate, the ECI, whatever the council decides, is this is the index that we want to go forward and try to hit for future budgets. It's aspirational, it is not something that is in, it's going to be codified, but I think it's important for us to telegraph to residents that we are really serious about considering how we are going to spend their money, not our money, and I think that that would be really helpful for the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just quickly say that I certainly appreciated the process this year. Compliment the mayor and my colleagues on the council, and also Ms. Ludlow and city staff. And give an honorable mention to Mr. Dan Weber. But I, I really think this was a very good process this year, and I appreciate the, the kind of upgrades that we've seen through the years. I just mentioned on the time reporting, I think it is important, I've felt so in the past, I think understanding, you know, how much different programs cost is important and very helpful in making decisions about whether we want to keep projects or not. Some are easier to do probably, if we look at Recreation Department and different programs, it's a little easier to keep track of the costs for each of those. But I think, you know, again, I come from the consulting world where, you know, you have to do this every day, and nobody likes to do it when you start doing it, but it becomes habit, you get it done, and you report your time, break down your day on what you worked on. Some, some places are easier to do that than others. You know, some people work on the same things day in and day out, and other people have, you know, jumped from one job to the next. That happens in the consulting world, and it happens here in the city, so I, I have little sympathy for the fact that people aren't enthused about it. I think it's, it could provide important information for doing better budgeting. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, two things. Compared to last year at least, so I only have two years of, of experience, there was a lot of resident engagement and a lot of discussion and involvement, and I, I appreciate that, and, and I welcome it, although at the time it was a little overwhelming. But I think that's a great trend, and I'd like to see more of it next year. And I, I think we, we didn't touch on, but maybe we just need to reference the notion that property taxes is a big, but not the only, source of revenue. And so even though I, I think we do want to have some kind of target, aspirational target for the budget, I also am, I, I neglected to say, and let's not forget about the other sources of revenue that we have that help us, help, help to balance the budget. And especially when we're talking about the budget next year, let's, let's keep reminding ourselves that there's, that on the other side of the ledger, besides property taxes, there's all these other things. That's all. Didn't want to lose that, didn't want to lose that thought.
Yeah, and I think thinking about advocacy in Annapolis of like, ever expanding, and so we're not so dependent on property taxes would also be important. I think it's a great note to end. Oh, did you want more than...
Sorry, I just, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to be fast, I promise. So, real quick about time on task, one of the things that I do want to charge each of us to think about is the purpose. Why are we asking people to track their time? For what purpose? In the consultant world, it makes sense to track your time because you're billing clients based on the time spent performing the task. So, so we really do need to keep in mind, what is it that we're hoping to use this information to do? Is it to help us try to figure out where staff should be reallocated, or types of projects we want them working on, or to get a better understanding of how much time people are spending on certain things? Because that's going to be very telling in terms of the types of data that staff actually enter, and it is a bit labor intensive, and it may require some additional resources to be invested in, like timekeeping technologies and the like. So we need to know if this is something that we are, we want, not just because residents want to know what each person is spending their time on, but how we would ultimately use that time card data for the purpose of not only improving the budget, but in making sure that we're hitting, you know, the council priorities. So, that's that.
Great. Awesome. And with that, we are done. See you in two weeks.